Subcommittee, and they are first on the agenda, so Mr. Murphy should be here momentarily. So with that, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we have the approval of the minutes from March 5th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion of the minutes of March 5th, 2019?
No.
Without any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Karen, that passes 4-0-1. Do we have a warrant, Karen?
Yes.
So again, warrants coming around. Like motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Warrant has been approved?
Second.
Approved and seconded. Any discussion on the warrant? Again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstaining?
I am abstaining.
You're abstaining?
Yeah.
We don't have the majority, then we'll have to invoke the rule of necessity.
I think, I just didn't have a chance to get my questions answered yet.
Why don't we wait until Tom gets here and...
We can do that, so we'll put off that vote on the warrant. Is there any public participation for anything that is not otherwise on the agenda?
Good evening.
Diana.
Hello, how are you tonight?
Good.
Diana Marcus, President of the Burlington Educators Association. I'm here tonight because of the need to provide a healthy, safe school environment for our students. For students to be successful in school and life, their health has to be a top priority at home, in school, and in our community. And school nurses are an essential pillar of that work. The impression left by the Assistant Superintendent's comments two meetings ago left the impression that the reason for a ratio of one nurse to 500 students was due to the need to train staff in the use of EpiPens. This couldn't be further from the truth. EpiPen delegation is not the reason for the state's ratio. The ratio is there for the safety of students. The withholding of EpiPen delegation is the dire consequence that the state holds over the district's head in order to gain compliance. As President of the BEA, I represent the nurses of the Burlington Public Schools, and it is my responsibility to ensure that they know their rights and responsibilities as employees. And in that capacity, I demand that if the school committee and the administration continue to understaff our schools relative to nurses, they provide nurses and other school personnel with explicit policies as to how to proceed when medical emergencies outnumber the nursing staff. How will you take responsibility when student learning conditions that provide insufficient nurses on staff cause illness, injury, or even death? Because the nurses have already alerted you to the issue. For example, if an elementary student has a medical emergency and this nurse needs to rush to the student's classroom, what happens when students arrive at the nurse's office and there's no one there to determine if they too are in need of emergency medical attention? How would you like the nurse to address the family of a student who did not receive life-saving attention due to understaffing? What about the regulations which state that whenever an individual health plan, a legal document, requires a nurse, there must be a nurse present on class field trips, socials, and other events? How will the district address families and students regarding field trips and other events that must be canceled at the last minute for all students due to inadequate staffing? Meanwhile, as you heard a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of meetings ago, the workload for nurses has increased dramatically. From the processing of health forms for the expanding intramural program at the middle school, to the increased complexity of our students' health needs, to the additional screenings that nurses must conduct, the workload leaves our nurses without time to eat their lunch or even go to the bathroom. Now, the district plans to add the processing of Medicaid billing for non-IEP students to the workload of our nurses. This could bring in revenue that's projected to be in the hundreds of thousands for the town, but this district has a budget guideline that provides not one dime for additional staffing to accomplish that billing. I could go on and on with examples, but I'm here tonight to not only demand that you address these concerns, but to ask how you plan to ensure the safety of our students through increased funding for school nurse staffing ratios that meet the state's regulations. The current proposed budget includes only one additional nursing position, and I remind you that to call it additional is fairly inaccurate, as this simply is the reinstatement of a position that the district left vacant when a nurse resigned. In order to meet the needs of our students in accordance with the state regulations, we need to not only replace that nurse, but we need two more. And this funding has to be a supplement to what has been budgeted already, not supplant services that we already know our students need for their academic, social, and emotional needs. There is no need for Burlington, with all of its resources, to have to choose between a strong academic program and the safety of our students. I believe the families in this town value both and more for their students. As is often said, a budget is an expression of an organization's values. I do not believe that a budget guideline that forces the district to skimp on the health and safety of our students, or that requires us to sacrifice academics, is an accurate reflection of this town's values. And I look forward to hearing how this committee and the administration intends to obtain the necessary funding to implement a budget that is true to Burlington's commitment to its children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public participation for anything that is not otherwise on the agenda? Okay, with that, I'll move on to information reports. Student representative, for you. You have a report for us?
Yep.
I'm excited for this report.
The freshman and sophomore class had their semi on Friday, which definitely broke even. And the semi was also a different event this year because they had a Mario Kart event as well as the dance, which usually doesn't happen, so it brought in a lot of other students. The sophomore class had their last bake sale, which got in $461. They're working on securing a prom locations for the junior class, and they are proposing a New York trip for their senior year. They also had a charity fundraiser that had $145, and St. Jude's got the most. The senior class, the majority of the seniors have gone on to internships this week. The student council and the senior class have finalized prom details. They've sold the rest of their senior t-shirts, and they're thinking about how to distribute their stuff for prom favors. They have selected favors for a senior banquet, which is going to be held at the Hilton Garden, and they're working with the same system as their prom tickets. And we have our ideas conference students for our proposal this evening as well.
Yeah, we'll get to that right away, but thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Any other subcommittee reports? Okay, Ways and Means, we're going to wait till we get into the thick of it. Yes, okay, that'd be great. So with that, I'm going to get to instruction technology. I'm going to turn it over to Patrick, and Patrick's going to take us through the Student Ideas Conference, the National Math Conference, and the Joppa Flats Field Trip. All three things are things we're very proud of. So Patrick, with that.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to call up the high school students to talk about the ideas conference they attended, and I know they have some affirmative presentation they'd like to make to the school committee.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Conceason. I'm a junior at Burlington High School, and I'm a part of the Student Ideas Group. Thank you for allowing us to speak to you tonight, and my peers are also going to introduce themselves before we begin.
I'm Donia Afshar, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Liam Brown, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Jason Wu, I'm a junior.
I'm Maria Kamani, I'm a senior.
My name is Colin Nguyen, I'm also a junior.
I'm Aria Nagraj, I'm a junior.
I'm Sarah Shake, I'm a sophomore.
And I'm Prop Disha, and I'm a sophomore.
IDEAS stands for Initiatives for Developing Equity and Achievement for Students. This program provides professional development opportunities in cultural proficiency, runs annual conferences for middle school and high school students, and the Tenacity Challenge. Burlington has a partnership with IDEAS which allows faculty to take their courses. Every student in front of you tonight attended an all-day training, and through this program they addressed identity, as well as different forms of bias and discrimination in society and our schools. At the end of the day, we discussed how to be advocates within our school. This presentation will provide serious steps Burlington High School should take to continue to build a equitable school community.
So why are we here tonight? It's important for students, faculty, and staff to understand and recognize their own biases and how it may have a harmful impact. Understanding biases will lead to a safer environment where students will feel more comfortable to learn. It's crucial that students, faculty, and staff learn to value differences because it will lead to a stronger community within all of our school systems.
So for the past two years, we've held a school climate survey, or school culture survey, to develop, to better understand the school concerns regarding equity and social and emotional well-being. So some of the responses from the survey the past two years have indicated that students overwhelmingly choose to interact primarily with people most like themselves, which can lead to problems in students' better understanding differences among different groups of people. Students report the use of derogatory language by other students, and even by faculty and staff, and this shows that people need to be aware of what they're saying in the school, because it seriously has deep effects on people. Even if they don't realize, it can have serious effects. And students also feel that during class discussions, diverse perspectives are not always encouraged and respected, which can lead to some students being afraid to talk and share their ideas in classroom environments. And not related to the school culture survey, but another statistic that school enrollment data has showed that students of various ethnic groups are underrepresented in honors and AP courses. So these statistics show that we need to make action to help students feel safer and build equity in the school climate.
All right, so here's our proposal. We propose that all administrators should receive training on cultural proficiency, and luckily enough for us, the BPS system does have a partnership with the IDEAS system, which offers a course for school administrators. The IDEAS course would help administrators understand the inner workings of cultural proficiency, which include discrimination, biases, microaggressions, and all that. But it's not necessarily the IDEAS program itself. There are many different other programs in our area that teaches the same things, and we believe it's very important for improving the school climate.
So basically, we also believe that all students deserve some sort of anti-bias training. It's important, especially for like the younger and upcoming generation, to understand how to positively interact with other people in their life that may not be the same as them going forward. And so, the ADL, which stands for the Anti-Defamation League, it offers like a training model called the World of Difference Institute. Basically, it's designed to like train kids and students to understand how different it is to interact with people who are not the same as them, and how to do so in a manner that doesn't come off as offensive or rude to anyone else. And these student leaders that are being trained, they will learn how to facilitate workshops in their own schools and classrooms, and as listed here, most of them will recognize bias and how that affects people in society, build an understanding of the values and benefits of diversity, improve like intergroup relations, and how to, like I said, do so without offending anyone, and confront racism, antisemitism, and all other forms of bigotry that they might experience later on.
We first learn from our parents, but our teachers are also who we look up to and learn from. Teachers see students every day, and it's important that teachers have training in all culture competency so they can support all students. All faculty and staff should be required to take an equity-based course such as the one offered by IDEAS. The training will help teachers understand and support their students.
At the moment, it's a district goal to achieve equity in our school system, so some need to help recognize the problems with equity and implement solutions for it would be invaluable, I think, as they could work with faculty and staff to increase cultural responsiveness and sensitivity. And with this district equity coordinator, next slide, we would have a district-wide equity community in conjunction with it, much like well-respected school systems Brookline and Wellesley have. And this equity community would mirror the VIEW community we have in our high school, as it responds to problem, everyday problems that students face, and it would have representatives from different places, so we address everybody's problems.
In addition to our proposal, we would like to say that the Burlington Public School Systems needs to increase their outreach to teachers of color. Since Burlington Public Schools has been such a diverse community, for students especially, it is filled with students from different races all around the world, and it is necessary that that is represented through the faculty as well. Students will feel much more represented and reflected if there are more teachers of color. And right now, in our Burlington Public School System, we currently are lack of teachers of color. Also, according to the Learning Policy Institute, teachers of color can boost academic performances of students of color, improving their graduation rates and their aspirations to attend college because they see themselves as the role models. However, teachers of color don't only benefit students of color, but the entire school system. Students of color and white students have reported that the teachers of color have been much more academically challenging, supporting, and caring. In addition, the Center of American Progress have shown that teachers of color tend to provide more culturally relevant teaching and better understand the situations that students of color may face. And therefore, we all believe that in right now, in our Burlington School System, we need to advocate and have more teachers of color.
So after these studies, we can see that the Burlington Public Schools can do more to recruit more teachers of color. For example, last spring, the Bedford Public Schools Superintendent and the Medical Coordinator traveled to six historically black colleges to recruit more teachers of color. So, the Burlington administrators can do the same, and should consider inviting students of color and their parents to join them. In conclusion, we all believe as IDEAS members that there should be equity amongst students. We believe that the Burlington Public Schools should work to address and build equity amongst students, and with the various ways that we mentioned in our proposal, including training administrators, faculties, and staff through bias and anti-bias training, as well as having teachers of color that not only spread diversity amongst students, but also between the faculty. There's a necessity to create a district-wide equity committee whose mission would be to continue making beneficial decisions to help our growing school system and diverse community. Thank you for listening, and we hope that you take our proposal into consideration. Now, we would like to call up the middle schoolers to say a few words.
Hi, I'm Alicia, and I'm in eighth grade. And before we start, we just would like to quickly introduce ourselves.
I'm Nora, I'm in seventh grade.
Hi, I'm Alicia, I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Christian, I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Shaila, and I'm in seventh grade.
We're all here to represent Marshall Simon's Middle School. All of us went and attended the IDEAS diversity training. Our training was the middle school version of what the high school kids experienced. It was a full-day conference where we discussed equity, privilege, and diversity. We talked about how equity is not always equal. Our purpose and objective is to educate students and faculty on matters of diversity and identity. We would like to open up the IDEAS diversity training to all of Marshall Simon's Middle School.
We think our school would benefit from a diversity education day. Since we can't bring the whole middle school to the IDEAS conference, we'd like to bring the conference to the middle school. To do so, we could have administrators of the conference and also possibly high schoolers who attended come to the middle school. We can take just a day or two and have different stations, some with activities and some with things like open discussions, in order to educate the student body about diversity and identity. We believe that everyone should be exposed to what we learned at the IDEAS conference, and we would also like to provide an opportunity for students and faculty to share their stories at a diversity club.
So what was planned is that we would get permission from our administration to start a diversity club, where students can be open about their ethnic backgrounds, and to learn about other students' backgrounds. We believe it will give an opportunity to build the relationships and give more knowledge about being open to everyone, which is why we think that the presentation the high schoolers made is very important for the entire school district.
Thank you for your time. I'm so forward.
Thank you very much. If you guys could just stay up, I'm sure the committee would have some, maybe some questions and some comments for you, and just wanted to commend you. You did a great job. So, again, with that, I'll see if the committee would like to say anything. Ms. Russo?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that was an excellent polished presentation. It was excellent. I saw some of you in the hallway rehearsing, and you should not have worried at all. You are doing a fabulous job. I really, really like the ideas. I especially like the, how you use a cultural survey to support the different ideas that you have to bring through. I think that's very important when you come to the school committee and the administration, that we have the data behind it, and you did that very, very nicely. The idea of a diversity club at the middle school, and then a district-wide, I believe it was a committee, are two that also I think are excellent, and it carries over through sixth grade through 12th grade. With that, the club in the middle school and then the district-wide committee is something that would be available to the whole district. And I think that's important, because the more that you bring in, the more ideas that get shared, the more opportunities we'd have to expand it. Also, the administration being trained all the way down is excellent, too. Again, I just, it was very well done. I look forward to hearing the administration moving forward, the different implementations of what you brought to us, and the survey is excellent. So, thank you.
Ms. Monaco?
That was a great presentation. You did a great job, and I agree with everything you said. So, I think whatever superintendent can help facilitate, we should move forward with. We have a wonderfully diverse community, and I guess I'm just used to it now, you know? It's just, we have a great diverse community. So, thank you for bringing to our attention, that maybe we should pay a little more attention to it. But you guys you guys did a great job, and whatever we can do to help move it forward, I'm all in.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
Just a few quick comments. Most of what I was going to say have already been said, but it's, I think it's important to keep equity issues in the forefront. Sometimes people take them for granted, and we assume that we have a lot of equity in the system when there's undercurrent perhaps of discrimination and not being treated equally, and we don't always hear that at this committee. So, it's important for us to hear it, and I'm glad that you came forward tonight and gave us such a wonderful presentation. It was very professionally done. It's a college-level performance amongst all of you. So, thank you for doing that, and I hope that we can get some follow-up and increase conversation and discussion about equity, and do a better job teaching tolerance. It sounds like some of the survey results indicate that there's not anywhere near as much tolerance as there should be for the diversity that we have, and we're lucky to have it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Simon?
I don't want to repeat everything everyone said, but the presentation was really excellent, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this, and the ideas that you brought us. I also think that they're all great ideas, and would like to see what can be implemented through the superintendent. You know, for a number of years now, we've had a core value for the Burlington School District, to value human differences, and to foster a sense of belonging, and to encourage and increase cultural proficiency among all the students and staff. And your ideas are just like a blueprint on how to move forward with those things. I know I've been following a number of you working on the VIEW Committee for a couple of years now, and I'm really glad that you've brought us something concrete that we can move forward with. You know, I wonder if there's an IDEAS course that we could participate in even sometime in the future, to have the same vocabulary and the same knowledge. So, thank you so much for taking the time and bringing us all these ideas.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
And just quickly, I echo everything that my colleagues have said. The world's a lot smaller place nowadays than it was certainly when I was growing up, and certainly when she was growing up.
He deserved that.
But it's important, frankly. It's important that people keep us aware of that, and you folks coming up through the future, so it's good for you to be aware of it, and live your life accordingly, and remind the rest of us to keep it in mind. And so, the presentation was outstanding, and we will continue, as my colleagues have said, to follow up on your suggestions, and we'll implement what we can, and certainly reinforce what you brought to us, and keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
I'm going to teach you some age tolerance.
Yes, I got it. Ms. Simon, just...
I also, I admire what you've done independently here and presented, but I also want to thank the teachers that are in the background. Ms. Crossman, Mrs. Chang, Mrs. Janovitz, and I'm not sure if there's anyone else there, are, I know have been very important in making this happen. Ms. Purchase, I know there are a lot of other teachers as well. I'm not sure if there's any others here tonight, but I want to thank them as well, and I know they've worked to help you find your voice, and I want to appreciate that as well, and to bring these ideas forward as much as possible.
And again, just thank you all, and it's important for us to continue to all learn from one another, and the student voice in this conversation is critical. So, thank you for adding your voice to that. Patrick?
Mrs. Eviline's in the back as well, but I was just going to say that we, Ms. Purchase and I had a chance to go to the IDEAS Conference at Bentley on Saturday with a number of teachers from the district, and the keynote I wish everybody in the room could have heard, Zaretta Hammond's her name, if you have a chance to look her up online. Just phenomenal. But what I came away with is, and again, it's not a new thought, but the IDEAS conferences are great, and having a day's training is great, but we need action, not just conversation. So, I'm going to make a commitment that we will have a group together before the end of the year. It's coming fast, so I hope that's quick enough. But, and that, the number one, the other thing I took away was it ended with a student panel. I think it should have started with a student panel, because you are the folks in our hallways, in our classrooms, that actually can give us the best feedback in regards to making sure and moving forward with this. So, thanks for coming tonight, and again, that's the commitment that we will have a district committee up and running by the end of the year, and from that point, we'll have to work on an action plan, so.
Great. Thank you all very much. Patrick, two more quick things before we reorganize the National Math Conference?
Yes. Just call up my notes. So, we had our math coach, Carrie Fortunato, was accepted to present at the National Council of Math- National Council of Math Supervisors Conference in San Diego, which is kind of a big deal. And she presented on defining number concept and number sense last week. And again, once, as always, great feedback for the resources that Carrie and the teachers in Burlington have worked together to create, and we've, we've made them available for free to help other districts move forward. Universal screeners, progress monitoring tools that we've developed in Burlington, and now, again, they're on the national stage, so that's a credit to Mrs. Fortunato and again, the math teachers that work with her on a day-to-day basis in the district. And what was the?
Joppa Flats?
Joppa Flats, our second graders, and I want to mention one more thing about Nashville as a preview for next meeting, but Joppa Flats, our second graders have been hanging out there with the Science Center crew and their teachers, and they're really doing some neat work. I'm hoping for a more formal presentation, but they've been talking with the teachers, and they actually came up with an idea about planting dune grass to help with the erosion out on Plum Island. So it's kind of a, kind of a neat project they've been involved with, working with the Audubon Society out there as well. And just, our kids are doing amazing things. Our second graders are working on coastal erosion on the North Shore, so who would have thought? So, again, I hope to have them and a few of the teachers come in before the end of the year because they're in the process. I think a couple more second-grade classrooms still have to get out there, but I think it would be neat for you to see and hear from them what they're up to. The last thing I wanted to mention, again, we had some middle school students go to National History Day. It started as a district, as a district-level competition. From the district level, we had, I think, 11 students move on to the state competition, which was in Winchester this past week. We had three students, Nolan Martin, Matt Shannon, and Emerson Weisner, who finished first in their category and are heading to Nationals in DC, so they'll be sharing that with you at the next meeting. And we also had Julia Schwarzman, a sixth grader, who also is going to be heading to Nationals for her performance. She did a, there's multiple ways, I'm new to this, it's the first year we've done it in Burlington, and the first year we're sending kids to Nationals, which they didn't really expect to be in year one, but it's a credit to Mrs. Sturdavant, and those kids were amazing. Just talking to them today after school a little bit. But Julia did a performance of Rosie the Riveter, and I learned stuff about Rosie the Riveter I never knew, just from talking to a sixth grader, and, and Mrs. Sturdavant, she's the expert on the topic, so, so that was really neat. And then the three who did a, kind of a documentary for their entry into National History Day were told on, you know, by one of the judges that they thought they had a pretty good chance to come away with something at Nationals, which is, again, a, a big deal in, in year one. So I don't want to give away the story about what they're up to, but I'd rather have you hear, hear it from them. But the project was on the Woburn Cancer Cluster, and they did amazing work. So again, I'm not going to, I'm going to let them tell you next time, but I'm looking forward to, to again, you hearing about the, the work that our students are doing across the district, so. And that's it for me.
Awesome. Thank you. I think when we showcase our students, we obviously, and our teachers, we, we show off what's best about, best about the district, obviously, so. With that, just, we have a final communication. Someone told me there was some snow mixed in with precipitation tonight, but I just think, I'm willing to take the risk that the last day of school will be Thursday, June 20th. Again, barring any sort of other unexpected either weather or some other sort of event, it looks like the last day of school, obviously seniors will be ending sooner, but everyone else will be Thursday, June 20th, meaning we would have used one, one of our five snow days this winter. So that's where we're at. All right, with that, my brief rein is quickly ending, so I'd like to thank all of the school committee members. This is sort of a meeting where we reorganize and start for another year. I think it takes a tremendous commitment on the five individuals up here, incredible amount of time, study, background, that really, that support I hope you see produces some of the student work and accomplishments that we, hopefully we, we mention. I know we'd never do it enough, but hopefully we mention more frequently at our, at our meetings. So I just want to thank all of you for your public service. With that, do I hear a nomination for Chair for the coming year?
Nominate Martha Simon.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion of the motion? With none, to take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that is five, zero, zero. Ms. Simon, congratulations and thank you.
First, I want to thank my colleagues for their vote of confidence in me, and I hope to meet the needs of the community and of the board. I serve as your servant here as the Chair, and I look forward to working with everyone again. This is my fifth year on the school committee, and I look forward to that as well. So I believe the next thing on the agenda would be to elect a Vice Chair. So I would accept nominations for that.
I'd like to nominate Christine Monaco.
Second.
Lucky me.
Being moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Can I vote? No.
Opposed?
Nope.
Abstained? Okay. That passes five, zero, zero. We now will take up the issue, actually, there was a note in our packet that I just wanted to comment on. We had a family who sent a letter to the school district thanking us for the support that their child received at the high school this year with some issues in the bridge program and in the evening academy and in the guidance department. And I, you know, they appreciate, they shared their gratitude to all of the staff that we have been able to provide for their student and for other students, and I just wanted to acknowledge that for all the staff who are part of that and all the staff who weren't part of that particular one but are helping all the other students in the school. Is there anyone who would, else would like to comment on that? Yes, Ms. Nelson?
It's very nice to get letters like that from parents expressing, you know, their, their gratitude and their, their pleasure with the way the system is working. Sometimes we only hear things when, when people have something negative to say, and it's wonderful to, to have a letter like that in our packet acknowledging, you know, the great work that the staff is doing at the high school, and as you said, Madam Chairman, at all of the schools, so. Thank you.
So next, we need to look at our committee assignments, and Sharon has been good enough to send us an updated one. We have 19 various issues, areas on the, on the list here, and I believe we've updated it by adding an audit subcommittee that Mr. Murphy now sits on. If we, do we need to go, we don't need to go through them individually, do we? We can vote on the whole packet? We can vote on the whole packet?
Oh, yeah. The other ones we have to do.
And, okay. And there's one change. It's my, as of la, last year when I became the representative for the District Capacity Committee, I also came on to the Academic Review Board in, in replacement of Mrs. Russo. So I believe that if we could put me in for that, I do not see any other need for changes. Is there, are there any other need for updates or changes in this list?
I'm okay.
Okay, then, including our formal appointments, this is our committees for the school committee and also the appointments for our designee to the Lab Collaborative, which is the superintendent, the Central Office Sexual Harassment Complaint Management Facilitators, which is our HR Director and Assistant Superintendent, our Coordinator for Non-Discrimination Compliance, which is our HR Director and Assistant Superintendent, and our School Committee Secretary, which is Ms. Gilbert. So, is there any other discussion or is there a motion?
I think the last floor have to be individually.
Oh, okay. So we are now looking at the 19 school committee assignments on this list as, as updated tonight.
And it'll actually be 20 if the audit committee is being added.
Well, this number has, the audit in on number 15, the one that Sharon sent us?
Oh, yeah, I see.
Okay, so there's 19.
I'm at the date.
Madam Chair, I, I move that the school committee assignment set forth in paragraph one through 19 of our backup materials be approved with the minor change that you noted to paragraph number two.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? And the Chair votes aye. That's five, zero, zero. Then the four, the formal appointments, which I've just listed, so the first one is our designee to the Lab Collaborative as the superintendent.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And the Chair votes aye. Next is our Central Office Sexual Harassment Complaint Management Facilitators, as mentioned earlier.
So moved.
Second.
And who were those?
The HR Director and the Assistant Superintendent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And the Chair votes aye. Third is our Coordinator for Non-Discrimination Compliance, the HR Director and Assistant Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye. Five, zero, zero. And last but not least, our School Committee Secretary, we would like to appoint Sharon Gilbert.
So moved.
Second. We all want to make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye.
One more comment, Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
Before we move on to the next order of business, I just want to commend Sharon for all of the hard work that she does. You know, she puts together minutes of our meetings that are just tremendously helpful to me, accurate. She's just a great resource to all of us school committee members, and I just want to thank her for her hard work, and hopefully she'll stay on board for a lot, a lot longer.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Sharon.
I second everything he said, and then some.
Any further comments? Okay. So now we will go to old business, and the first thing on the list is the Burlington Educate, Early Childhood Center, Planning for Success document, which was presented for a first reading and is up for a second reading now. Is there any, is there a motion?
I'd move that the school committee approve the BECC Planning for Success Plan as presented to us last, last meeting.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I agree. I thought they did a nice job, Ms. Clark did a nice job. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye. Five, zero, zero. Next is the Marshall Simons Middle School Planning for Success document. Again, this is a second reading. Do we have a motion?
And move the school committee approve the Marshall Simons Middle School Planning for Success document as presented at our last meeting.
Second.
Third.
Any further discussion? Once again, I thought Ms. Purchase did a really nice job presenting the information, and I like the direction and how all the programs are working in the district goals. Yes?
Go back and do the warrant.
Okay, after we've voted on this one. Okay? So, is there any further discussion on the Marshall Simons Planning for Success?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye. That's five, zero, zero. And I was reminded that we put off the approval of the warrant, so I'd like to, we did have a motion earlier. Should we do it again?
I think we have to read the rule of necessity, Madam Chairman, in the.
Regardless? Okay.
Unless you're going to vote for it.
I still haven't had time to answer my questions.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
What I understand is necessarily to invoke the rule of necessity, so I'm just going to read what we have been giving to whenever that's invoked. As you know, since the immediate family members of two of the school committee members are teachers, the committee cannot reach a quorum on this particular issue due to conflicts under the Conflict of Interest law. You've been advised by council to invoke the rule of necessity to allow us to vote on any matters involving the financial interests of such family members, and by this statement are invoking the rule. Detailed disclosures regarding the matter were made at the committee's April 11th, 2006 meeting, recorded in the minutes, and are on file with the town clerk, may be viewed at the town clerk's office. This is voting on the warrant, which is appropriating money to be spent in the district, and a majority cannot be gained without invoking the rule of necessity.
I move we approve the warrant.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The Chair abstains. Okay, and now back to old business. We had a Distance Learning Initiative update. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the school committee received a letter from Mr. Audubon, and, and I think Laura Witazek also sent you an email. I, again, I committed to them that I would discuss the Distance Learning Initiative with the committee, and I just wanted to make a recommendation under old business. I think that what part of Joe's presentation was scheduling a trial day sometime this spring where they could try out some of the curricular activities they were having. Again, this would not impact, students would all be in school, services would all be delivered, and they were going to then study and get some feedback on that, on that trial. I think as a next step, I'm not prepared to sort of recommend this as a, as a sort of complete policy yet, but in order for me to do so or to shape my opinion, I do want to support this trial. So I just wanted to seek the committee's permission to tell them to schedule a day and to, again, I would come back with the committee to, as to when that date is, and then talk to them about what they're going to look at, and then before we make a decision, and again, I don't really think we need a decision until next fall, again, pending any sort of other inclement weather, but I just think that's going to be valuable information to shape my ultimate recommendation to the committee. So again, I'd just like approval to move forward with a trial, and again, I just want to restate, the pilot that they're going to be doing does not require the students to be out of school. All the students will be in school. I think they'll just be delivering curriculum in a slightly different way and seeing what some of the challenges are and what some of the successes are as, as they do so.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
Speaking as, as one member, I would support the initiative. I think it's a, we were chosen to pilot this program, I guess it was four or five years ago now, where we were all treading a new ground. We tried to put something together on, at the seat of our pants, and it, it didn't work as well as we all would have liked, but I think we all agreed that it needed more study and more discussion and more people involved in the discussion, but ultimately, it was a, it was a worthwhile project, at least in my opinion. And now clearly, we have a group who has been spending a fair amount of time on this. They came before us, they made a nice presentation, they had some, what I think were good ideas, good suggestions. I think they put some, some workable procedures in place that they've had both input from administration and, and staff, as long, as well as students. So to me, I think they certainly have earned the right to keep moving forward and certainly test this, see if it works. If it doesn't work as well as we'd like, maybe it'll identify some weaknesses that could be tweaked. It's a process, but I think ultimately it, it gives some flexibility to the school department to deal with circumstances. You know, the last couple of winters haven't been all that severe, but it was only a few years ago where that wasn't the case. So I think having the flexibility is a valuable thing, and I think you only learn by doing, so I think we have to try it and tweak it as necessary, but I, I certainly would support moving forward.
Mr. Nelson?
Madam Chair, I agree with everything that Mr. Murphy just said, and I'd like to make a motion that the school committee direct the superintendent to go forward with the initiative and hold a pilot test day sometime this year.
Second.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Mrs. Monaco?
I'm in favor of having a pilot test day.
I'm in favor of having a pilot test day. I still have some detailed questions about how it will work out for kids with special needs, and some other questions about when it would become implemented, after how many snow days, et cetera. But as far as this particular motion goes, I am in favor of it.
Any more discussion? Yes, Mrs. Rousseau, sorry.
Again, I'm in favor, I do have one question. Is this going to be K through twelve? Okay, good, so it will include the elementary. Excellent, so I'm curious to see how it goes, especially at the lower levels, and what the feedback is from the different populations we have in the school. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'm in agreement with what has been mentioned, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, five zero zero. Okay, another, should we, the other old business, two questions I had, should we do those now? So I was just looking for a brief update on the bus contract in our, the former meeting minutes that we were reading for March fifth, we talked, there was some, a deadline of April eleventh for any changes that we wanted to put into the contract, so I asked Mr. Kuno to give us an update on the process and the timeline, and if there were any other changes we needed to look at. Thank you.
So, thank you. Yes, there have been some changes. All of the feedback that has been presented to me through the school committee and also through Ways and Means has been updated in an addendum, which I do have. It's not been submitted in your packet, but I will pass that around to you as well. I also would like to thank Mr. Eiler from the Ways and Means Committee. He has put in countless time, sharing documents back and forth, updating parts of the document, and really just providing a lot of assistance with this. So again, thank you, Ms. Eiler, on that. Again, this is an addendum that would go out to all potential bidders, so again, I'll share that with the committee as well, too, so.
When are the bids due?
So the bids will be due on the twelfth, which is this Friday. As we all know, this would be a five-year agreement that we would be looking at, so of course, this would be, it would be a requirement that we would need to get funding through town meeting approval in order to complete this document or complete the contract as well, too. With that being said, here is a warrant article that was not voted on because it's not a financial article as far as this committee is concerned, but it is as far as town meeting is concerned. So I have submitted that document through the board of selectmen. That would put us on the town meeting schedule for a vote for the five-year agreement for town meeting to approve that. Again, that's budgeted in our fiscal budget to, for the bus contract as well, too, but town meeting does need to support that. So again, the bid documents for the bus are due on April twelfth, which is this Friday, and again, pending approval through town meeting on the agreement, and pending that the budget is approved, then we would select a vendor at a later date.
Yes, Mr. Murphy.
Just a clarification, the town meeting regarding the, action regarding the five years is because we're only permitted to go three, and we need the town meeting approval to extend beyond three for the contract. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Monaco? Did the request for seat belts and buses that, you know, could have seat, did all that go in?
Yes.
Okay, and do the people doing the bidding know that it's in there?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you'd like to pass those down.
Mr. Nelson?
My question, Bob, is the, are we going to postpone awarding the contract until after the town meeting takes a vote on whether or not they're going to approve a five-year contract?
We would provisionally award the contract pending funding, but if need be, we could extend the deadline for the contract.
How long are the bids good for? So if a bidder submits a bid, I mean, obviously, we can't award the contract six months later and expect them to honor that bid, right? How long are the bids generally good for?
So the way that the contract is written is, is that the deadline of the twelfth is when all the bidders must submit their packet by noon time. So once the bids are in, that's when it's closed. Then what would happen is, is that we would review the bid documents, select the vendor who right now has the initial best quote until we do further review on it. But again, we would do a full award pending town meeting approval, school committee approval on the operating budget.
But they'll hold the price for what, sixty days?
Yeah, so they'll hold it until July one.
Okay, let's go ahead with one.
Other questions or comments on the bus contract?
Again, I do want to thank Bob and the selectmen who voted on Monday last night to put the transportation warrant, the transportation article in the warrant. So that copy of that was at your seats.
Thank you. Okay, the other old business is that we did receive a report from Powers and Sullivan, and I'm going to ask you, Ms. Kasha, to tell us which report that is that he gave, because I think there's more than one thing going on, and what, or Dr. Conti, if you could report on that for us, please.
I'll pass it in the call again, I believe it was the year end, was that the one that we received recently? So again.
It was the agreed-to procedures for our end-of-year report, which is the final report that we filed with the state for financial purposes.
And that was for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we do a year-end report every year? We're looked at every year, and again, Mr. Murphy from the Audit Committee or Ms. Kasha shared the document with you. I think the comments were positive. I think the, again, from the year-end report perspective, I think things were going very well, and I think, again, that's a tribute to all the work that's happening in the business office. So again, Ms. Kasha, thank you for getting the year-end report done. I think the summer's a busy time, I think people have to realize how busy that is, and one of the major things that's being done in the business office during the summer is the year-end report. So thank you.
Further comments? Thank you, Ms. Kasha, for all the work I know you did on that, and mine, I read the report, and I mean, something was on the wrong line, I think, is one of the two things, so I think it's a good... We appreciate all of the work you've done. Mrs. Rousseau?
I thought we were missing pages, honestly, with the findings. I kept looking back and forth, so thank you, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, any other old business? Okay, so now we'll move on to new business. First of all, our fiscal year twenty school budget wrap-up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you all received documents this weekend of the fiscal twenty. So again, this process actually starts in, well, really, for us, it starts as soon as the fall starts, but I think we met with town sometime in November. I think where we're provided a early financial picture of where the town believes that is. We're given a rough guideline to begin our budgeting process. I think this year, we were asked to work around a three-and-a-half percent increase blended between the town and the schools, and our goal was to come in at a three-point-seven-five percent increase. From there, we asked the people who were in charge of all of our cost centers, so the people where the money is being spent, our schools, our different departments, to present, to create a budget, to look over all their needs, and to put together their requests. Again, Ms. Kasha helps shape that conversation, given the new process that we was created in for fiscal nineteen. And I think going over the details of all that has really been our work over the last eight weeks. I want to make sure I thank the Ways and Means Subcommittee throughout today's presentation. So after receiving all of the input from our cost centers, again, we all saw the details of that, and those requests totaled a six-point-two-three percent increase over fiscal nineteen. I do want to commend, again, everyone who submitted a budget. I don't think there was anything that I found superfluous or unneeded or that I think would help benefit the students, and I think that's, that was their task. There were many years in the past where we would make some of those reductions before presenting those or having those conversations publicly. I think some of the feedback that we got is we were having too much agreement. So our new process is, we let everyone see the unfiltered requests that come in, and then we do the work of going through all the lines and making those reductions, and we're going to go through those reductions tonight with everybody. And again, the comparisons to nineteen and the line-by-line detail, that's really the work that's been happening over the last six to eight weeks. So from the six-point-two-three percent of the budget, that was the increase that was requested, we had to make about one-point-three million dollars in reductions to get down to our guideline. So I think if you look at the one-page sheet in front of you, we were asked to put together the budget reductions on sort of a simple sheet. And so we can just essentially go down through the expenses and the salaries. I think if you go to your budget document, it's going to be very similar to prior years, where eighty-five, eighty-six percent of our expenses are always salary. We probably have close to, what, ten percent in contracted services and facilities, and there's very, you know, five percent might be discretionary. So if we're going to make one-point-three million dollars in reductions, we're really going to have to look at salaries pretty carefully in everything that we do. There were thirteen-point-three new positions requested, and again, I don't think any of those positions were anything that wouldn't have added value, but I think we need to be mindful of the resources that we have and the budget we put together. So, so again, through the chair, Ms. Simon, if you just want me to speak down through, I don't need to read all of them, you all can read, but I'm saying we have an expenses category.
Excuse me, does everyone who have a copy of this sheet that we're reviewing who would like one? Do we have any other copies of this? It's the fiscal school, fiscal year twenty school operating budget reductions to guideline. Does the Ways and Means Committee have that? Okay, is, do we have any other copies that we can share? Great, okay, so if anybody else would like one, they're up there with Mrs. Gilbert. And Dr. Conti's already reviewed our original total budget request with all of the requests from all of the different cost centers, and the number that was reduced by these following items that he's about to review with us.
Something I do want to stress before we go through these reductions, is that this is an incomplete picture. So again, we're looking at presenting a number, and I just want to make sure I stress this a couple times, is that what we needed to create was a possible scenario that would make our budget work. There are many factors that we still don't yet know. We don't have a high school schedule that's created, we don't have our complete section counts yet, we don't have our complete enrollment information yet, and we don't have all the retirements that I'm assuming are going to come in, because people can retire when they want to notify us and people's lives happen and change. So this is a moving target, so what's presented tonight is not set in stone. You may see some reductions in positions that may get added back in. You may see some retirements that mean that there doesn't need to be any sort of reduction in force at all. So again, I want to stress, what we created tonight was one possible scenario that gets us to guideline, but things are going to change because they always change. And we just put the information that we had on hand at this time to create a budget that came down to guideline, and we looked at some early enrollment numbers, and again, the high school schedule is not yet created, so we don't have a firm grasp yet of section counts. So there were some, again, reductions, about one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars in reductions in expenses, and you can see where those came from, the athletic reconditioning. I think we discussed that there was a washroom that was damaged when we had the sewage flood that we didn't know when was going to get rebuilt, and I think we got that rebuilt sooner than we thought. So instead of contracting out those services, we can do some of that reconditioning of clothing in-house, and we can save some of that money. And then there was some special education that we can reduce because we're funding those expenses through a grant. So I think we've stepped through all of these individual line items, but that was some reductions from our original budgeting. And again, with eighty-six percent of our expenses being in salary, we couldn't possibly reduce one-point-three million dollars without looking at salaries. So we went through every single position quite carefully. We looked at, again, who was doing what. We had a tutor line that we felt we could reduce and still provide adequate services on, and so we made a quarter-of-million-dollar reduction in tutors. We're not filling a vacant craftsman position in the maintenance department. We have a high school's social studies teacher who is not returning to teach, and felt like the section counts were not needed in the history department, so we added those sections to another part of the budget, but we were, so we're not filling, we're not backfilling that social studies department. We have some movement, and we can discuss some of the movement with health and PE, again, given the enrollment and given the program that we have. Again, there is a number that says there are two health and PE teachers at the high school that have RIF next to them. I don't believe, again, that means reduction in force. We don't have all the information, and again, I am not certain at this time that we're going to have to have a reduction in force. We've communicated both with the teachers and with the curriculum director, Matt Jackling, just to say we had to present, again, a model that works, but there's a lot more planning that needs to happen. Same thing is happening with high school art, we just look at an early number of sections. We had to reduce, again, an art position at the high school in order to get down to our guideline, but I'm not certain that, again, that that position is not going to be needed either at another school or we haven't yet scheduled art classes yet. In the middle school, a librarian is, there's going to be some shifting of some faculty because of retirements on the middle school staff. So no one in the library is retiring, but there's going to be another retirement of a middle school teacher, and I believe there's going to be a transfer, and then we're not going to backfill that transfer immediately in the way that we would normally just replace a position, so we're going to have some cost savings there in salary. And it wasn't just about reducing positions, we also had some additional requests. Again, I think ultimately, we had close to thirteen positions that were added, and we had to reduce many of those requests as we moved forward. But we were able to keep in five positions, and I can identify those five positions now. While they are in your budget, we can sort of, I can specify them right now outside of the budget document. So this budget at three-point-seven-five percent includes a, an additional middle school assistant principal. It includes an additional ELL teacher. It includes an additional nurse. It includes a guidance coun, an elementary guidance counselor at Fox Hill. And it includes an adjustment counselor at the high school.
If I could ask, is that in the guidance department?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, I think there's, there are other shifts and changes. There's probably some point-twos or point-sixes that we've looked around, that we've shifted around, but I think those, one, those five positions are part of the reason we had to contract other places because of the needs that we are having. Again, our enrollment is staying relatively steady, but the diversity and needs within that enrollment are changing drastically, which is, again, is why we're, the positions that you're seeing, a lot of them are based on the health, language-based needs, and social-emotional growth of our students. So, and the middle school assistant principal was a commitment this committee made, and I wanted to make sure that we kept that middle school assistant principal in the budget.
A quick question, Madam Chair, while we're on the subject.
Thank you, okay, yes.
So Eric, if we're looking at this one-page summary?
Yes, sir.
There's a yellow box, and it says, "Fund four-seventeen, four-seventy-four of the eight-nineteen." The four-seventeen, four-seventy-four, is that represented by the five new positions you've just described?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
There are other questions now for Dr. Conti?
Again, we can go through some of the budget document. I just wanted to explain sort of where we got to and where we reduced and some of the compromises that we had to make.
Mrs. Monaco?
There are a lot of positions in there that I'm really not happy we're not able to fill. What happened to, I don't even see it in here, maybe it wasn't asked for? The assistant principal for Memorial was never requested? principal for Memorial was never requested?
It was not formally requested. I think it was discussed at the committee level, and we certainly could have put it in. That would have made the 6.23, the initial budget, just higher, and it would have made us had more to cut. So I'm saying we could have done that. I just don't think it would have survived this year, even if we, I wouldn't have prioritized that position, given the five positions that we are adding. I'm not saying the need doesn't exist, Mrs. Monaco, I'm just saying I don't think it would have made it through.
Well, earlier when Diana mentioned the need for nurses, I just think this is maybe the time to say what's on my mind about that. And I think that there is a need for nurses. I think Diana's right. I think if a nurse is racing to give a glucose shot to somebody who's about to go into a diabetic coma and another child, you know, falls and hurts themselves, we're, you know, we don't have enough bodies. So Diana, I agree with you. I think that not having a second administrator at, say, Memorial, especially because it's so big, I think that's very unfortunate because it means that the principal has so many evaluations to do that I don't know how anyone can do them and do other work as well. So I'm disappointed that isn't in here. When we had all of the budget presentations, I thought that the elementary math specialists were really important as well because it's such an important subject, and we tend to focus more on reading. And we've been, I think, becoming stronger and stronger with our focus on math. And I just think it's too bad that we can't fund these, and it's frustrating to sit here and know that we really need these positions, but we can't afford them. So I just wanted to speak my piece on that.
Are there other questions on the budget now from the committee?
Are we talking about the whole budget? Or anything further, Eric?
Well, actually, procedurally, am I correct that the school committee is going to have a answer of our questions, and then we'll open the public hearing? Is that the right procedure?
Yeah.
Public hearing is a separate vote.
It's a separate thing, okay.
So we're currently not in the public hearing.
Right, so this is a discussion.
But I just wanted to have a summary. And again, I think the- Sorry, the main point of the conversation now, or at least what the task that I feel like I was given, is to detail how we got down to the guideline and what positions. You've been part of the conversations. I think you know the positions that were being requested. And I think that I would not argue with Mrs. Monaco about the need. I think there are positions that we just need to think about in terms of equity. And again, just please, in your thinking, remember Fox Hill is as large or slightly larger than Memorial at this point, so.
That we need to.
I understand that, but I'm just sort of saying, so with, you know, with math specialists and with assistant principals, we really need to think of those as equivalent elementary schools at this time. The five positions that were chosen from the list of requested were really, given our guideline and given the priorities that we saw, some of the ratios that we have to fulfill, I think with the ELL teacher. And again, I understand the challenge with nurses, and we really struggled over the adjustment counselor and an additional nurse. So that would be two nurses without the adjustment counselor. And again, I think both are serving the health and wellness of students. And again, all of these were challenging decisions. I don't want you to think that they were easy at all for us to compromise.
Mr. Murphy?
A question, then a comment, I guess. When we get to the public hearing portion of it, we have to vote salary, non-salary, and overall. I assume maybe you're waiting until this discussion. There's no numbers on my, so I assume somebody has those numbers someplace when we get to that point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a general comment. Every year, we're always trying to fit ten pounds of stuff into a five-pound bag, and there's always things that don't make the cut that I think there's merit to have them in there, but that's just the nature of the beast. I think, and we talked about this a little bit last year, and I'm just going to reinforce it maybe this year, because I'm guilty of it frankly. I think we have to treat the guideline meetings in November and December a little, I think we've got to come into them with a little bit more of an idea of what our actual needs, you know, nobody knows what's going to happen, but the natural needs might be with respect to some of these positions that didn't make the cut this year, if we want to put them in next year, in addition to any other issues that have come up in the meantime. Because frankly, that's where the goal comes from, and then we spend the rest of the year trying to fit within that goal, even if it doesn't fit within our needs or wants. It's, that's, we've kind of bought into the system over the years. I think if you look at the budget guidelines and, you know, going back as far as I've seen, we've always come within the guidelines. And sometimes that means making cuts of deserved services and teachers and other things in our budget. So perhaps we should think about this as we get into the fall season coming up for next year's guideline meetings to have, at least in our mind, a kind of a firm number that we think is reasonable and necessary for what we foresee our needs going to be. But as far as this year, we agreed to the 3.75. I've always been an advocate of coming in at the budget guidelines because that's kind of what we agreed to do. And if we ever get in a situation where something that I feel is crucial is cut out, then I think I would be willing to make an exception. Here, there's a lot of positions that had merit and wants and needs that had merit, but I will abide by the judgment of the administration in terms of what's kept in and what doesn't make the cut, and I would support the budget as proposed.
Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Pugh. Kind of echoing what Tom just said, I'm not going to second-guess the superintendent. He's in a better position than all of us, I think, to determine the importance and the priority of the five positions that we can get in with this 3.75 percent guideline. I think it's healthy to have the discussion that we've had over the last six weeks about what the needs are in the district, and the fact that we have this list about all of the staffing needs that were presented to us, and we've had administrators come before us and talk about their needs and justify them. We had Bob O'Connelly come in before us and gave us some eye-opening statistics about 25,000 visits, nurse visits between 2017 and 2018 increased a 12 percent. I mean, a lot of people don't know what's going on in the nurses' office. They say, hey, when I was in elementary school, we didn't even have a nurse, you know, and that, it's a different world now. And I think we're sensitive to it, and I, you know, I heard what Diana said tonight about going in with a supplemental budget or something to see if we can beef up the nursing staff levels this year. But I don't really think there's an appetite in this committee to do that. We, as Tom said, we had an agreement when we went through the planning process that we would come in at the 3.75 percent guideline because there's a lot of planning that takes place at the town level based on that guideline. It's not just easy enough to go in and ask the town meeting for more because it kind of undoes all the planning that's been going on on the town side to try to fit it within the tax structure and only limit increases in the tax bills to a certain level. At 3.75 percent, it's going to cause property taxes to go up. They're not going to be level-funded, and so we've been fortunate in this town to be able to absorb the increases in order to meet the needs of the kids in the community. We've been adding staff, but the needs, as Eric said, they're more diverse, and the staff is needed. It's not a luxury, it's a necessity. So I would not support going in at, this year, over 3.75 percent. The town actually gave us a supplement last year in September. So I, for one, do not have any desire to ask for another supplement at any point during this fiscal year process unless there's another emergency that comes up. Like Eric says, if a hundred students enroll in kindergarten in August, we've got a problem. And the town's always been good to us in that respect. They understand we can only plan based on the information and the facts that we have right now in March and April. So I would support the budget that's been presented this evening at this 3.75 percent with the five new positions. I do share Chris's concerns about not having an assistant principal at the Memorial School, and we don't have one at Fox Hill. At least Fox Hill's going to get a new adjustment, I mean, excuse me, a new guidance counselor this year, which the principal, when asked, said he would rather have a guidance counselor than he would an assistant principal for this year, if he had to make a tough decision. But hopefully next year, we can, as Tom said, we can start presenting the needs earlier in the process, and maybe next year we push for a four-and-a-half percent increase and get these things done once and for all, so we're not constantly understaffed. But it's been a long process, and I want to just thank the administration, Nicole, Patrick, and everyone who's worked on it, Bob, for going through it, winnowing out all the, it's not surplusage, but the things that we could hopefully live another year without, so that's all I have.
Madam Chair, can I just point a clarification, too?
Yes, Dr. Conti.
Because, again, the guideline conversations in the fall, I do think the town allows for some flexibility. So the blended guideline itself is a form of flexibility, and I think that was a very positive thing. I think when they asked us, the major unknown for us this year, we said it was our transportation budget, and I do think they said the increase could be considered outside of our guideline. So again, I think that was some flexibility, because if we had to guess what that increase was going to be, I'm not sure we would have been ready to present the budget tonight. So again, I want to make sure I convey thanks for that. And I think also, when Mary Hood presented about creating a high school program that would keep a cohort of students in district, we're piloting that program and creating that program through the accommodated account, because I think people found the benefit of doing so, there's a financial benefit for doing so, which, again, I understand, my primary concern is I also believe there's an instructional and a child benefit for doing that as well. All of those things, I think, help contribute to us coming in at guideline. And again, a few decisions the other way would have shifted the guideline conversation completely. So again, I do think there was some, there's always a back and forth. I think there's a good working relationship, and I just think our effort has to be to try to meet that flexibility by making some challenging decisions ahead of time with the budget.
Mrs. Russo?
I do think this sheet, though, can be very helpful in the fall, looking at what wasn't funded in the budget. We know our salaries, that that's pretty stable, so moving forward, when we do go in the fall, we can see that the elementary specialists were on there, that we would still like more nurses, that we have assistant principal positions, and I do think that conversation needs to be had, and the fall is the better time to do that. I think what Diana said and the way she said it, different points of choosing academic versus safety, to have the guidelines that puts all of that together, I think those were very important words and well said, and we need to bring those forth in November because I think looking at this list in September and what didn't get funded could help start that conversation that Tom was talking about for that guideline. And this gives us more real information and real numbers that we can put onto what we assume with the budget for salary increases, and that 81 percent, that's pretty standard there. So I think we'll, we would have a very, a much better conversation, detailed conversation, too. So I do like Mr. Murphy's ideas.
Did you have something else to say?
Yes, sir.
No, you're all set. I wanted to, I agree with what's been said. I wanted to add both that I really appreciate, I know that these were difficult choices as to which positions to fund and not to fund, and what to pull out so that we could fund these additional five positions. I know Dr. Conti mentioned that he had spoken with the principals and that they had made decisions. I believe that Mr. Rosenblatt had requested the guidance counselor instead of a math specialist. I'm not sure it was, I think that was the choice that he-
I assumed he chose one out of all of them.
Oh, he did, okay.
And the guidance counselor was the one.
Oh, okay. And also, I think when we talk about the need for assistant principals, that we need to be clear that the Fox Hill school is the same size as the Memorial School, and that we need, I believe we need at least two more assistant principals, because certainly there would be use for another assistant, an assistant principal at Pine Glen as well. As a former teacher, I used to kind of wonder about adding layers of administration. However, I am very much feel the need for assistant principals because it was only about six or seven years ago, we had a new teacher evaluation process that's much more demanding for teachers, and it's much more demanding for our administrators. And if the point of that, the point of adding this new mandate, and I don't know if anyone's ever seen it, it's got 42 strands and whatever, it's got all these things that everybody's got to look at and address. And the point of it is to improve teacher instruction, and that's our goal, is to have better instruction in our schools. And if our principals have to evaluate 80 or more staff, they can't do it well. If we want to improve teacher instruction, we need more assistant principals to help with those evaluations. Assistant principals also help with other things. I don't want to minimize that. But if that issue alone, to me, is very worrisome. And when I first came on the committee, there was a request for assistant principals at the two largest schools. It was not able to be funded that year. We were able to fund it the year after, and because of the financial problems we've had for the last couple of years, we've had to remove one of them, well, two of them last year. And I'm really pleased that we're able to put back in a second assistant principal at the middle school. I would really love to see one at Memorial and at Fox Hill. I don't see that there's a way to do it in this budget, but I would like to make sure we put that on the list for next year. And again, if having that guideline conversation at the beginning, including those needs, are clear, it maybe will give us more flexibility in the future. The equity between the schools is a concern. It's not, you know, because of the sizes. In the past, sometimes there's a little more staffing, so I'm very glad that Dr. Conti and Mr. Rosenblatt were able to, you know, find funding for the additional guidance counselor at Fox Hill. I wish we'd been able to fund all of the positions. So are there other comments now from the committee? Yes, Mrs. Monaco?
I just wanted to add that, like Eric said, there is a lot of resilience or elasticity. You know, we have gotten compromised, and we have gotten programs, and we are thankful to the administration of the town and town meeting for helping us to do the things that we're doing. I think that this past year, we did make somewhat more of an effort to go into the guideline meeting with an idea. But I don't think, I think it was our first year doing that, and I think that we need to do even a better job of that. And I guess the point I wanted to make is that I think it's this committee that really needs to work together, and maybe with the help of Ways and Means, to make the needs of a growing system with all kinds of burgeoning technology and curriculum. I think we need to work together to make those needs better known earlier on so that when we go in and they say, well, you know, you did it with 3.75 last year, you know, it's like, but all of this is missing. And so it's our job to sell it. It's our job to talk up our schools and all the new things we're doing and how the enrollments are growing gradually, but yet growing, growing, growing. And so I hope that we kind of get together as a group as we approach that guideline meeting next time around.
So, again, Ms. Simon, again, I just want to now draw your attention to the other document. That was at your chair. Again, Ms. Goss just put a lot of time- Again, Ms. Gosh, you've put a lot of time into the operating budget document. This is going to be the document that ultimately gets distributed to town meeting members. Again, and along with the suggestion of profiles of our student body, I think that suggestion was made from the, from the subcommittee.
I believe, is that pile, Mrs. Gilbert, have this, this is our fiscal year 2020 operating budget document, as Dr. Conti is referring to. It's available here.
Is it four, five?
So this is the one?
Yeah.
I got it. Yep, I got it. Thanks. I have it here.
Okay. I think that's where you have...
Yep.
Okay.
Got it. Perfect. Okay, so again, the format is, is similar to the format for fiscal 19. Again, the, I just want to highlight page three, because I know the, the second most important numbers to Ms. Creedon, other than the financial numbers, are the table of content and the page numbers that exist. So I'm just saying, I think, so I just wanted to highlight that. And then we'll be adding some, again, a letter from my office and some communication from the principals. I think if you go to page seven, you'll see the comparison to fiscal 19, and both the accommodated and the total operating increase, again, the 3.75, and then the 6.59 percent increase in the accommodated. I think there's other very good historical data, that if you look at page eight, with the budget approvals from 2014 to 2019, both in the accommodated and the operating. And then the percentage guidelines and percentage increases also covering those same, those same years. I think nine is, school organizations are people organizations, they just always are, and those relationships are critical, and we just have phenomenal people here in Burlington. I just can't say, talk about them enough. Again, I know learning starts at the home and with families, but we just have just phenomenal educators and support staff in Burlington. And the vast majority, 86 percent of what we're spending, are for the people who work with the children of Burlington. And so again, any, any sort of increase or decrease in our budget has to impact staff, and people are programming in schools, so they're, they're equivalent. Ratios, again, on page 10 of support staff, teachers and administrators, obviously the, the vast majority of our spending should be on the educators, working directly with kids, and glad to see that it is. People always ask for a snapshot of our teacher profiles. You know that teachers are paid based on years of service and also by their educational credits. And I think, again, Nicole put together a nice snapshot, looking at sort of the education of our teachers. Again, we have a highly educated staff. With that education, again, comes additional cost, but I think there's a benefit to that in terms of the distribution. And then over time, again, people are going to get continual credits, so you'll see people move sort of down in seniority, or up in seniority, depending on your perspective, and obtaining more, more educational credits. Let me take a view from 10,000 feet on page 12 and 13. This is district-wide budget by category, again, and there was backup to all of this, and that's what we've been doing for the last eight weeks, so there's support to that. And I want to again thank the Ways and Means Committee, again, throughout the evening, about all of your work, going through all of the detail behind each of these numbers, so thank you. The numbers that we'll be voting tonight, just so people can see them in the context of the district-wide budget, are on page 13. So if you look at the total school personnel budget, which is basically the summary at the top third of the page, which is $45,989,916, is going to be the salary and operating. The non-salary and operating is going to be the $7,304,040. And then the accommodated is going to be the $11,699,108. And again, I'll repeat those numbers, I just wanted to show you where they were in context. So if you circle those three numbers, again, Mr. Murphy, I think those are the numbers that you're looking for.
Yep.
I don't believe we separate out accommodated into salary and non-salary, so just straight up accommodated.
I'm sorry, I caught three, two of those categories. I have the total school personnel at $45,989,000, and the operations and maintenance at $7,304,000.
Mm-hmm.
And what's the third?
The accommodated is right to the right of that?
The total.
The...
The total, is that, is that a separate vote?
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, the total, so the $53 million, $293,000, okay.
And then again, that's, that's where the information exists, where the votes are going to be, and then the accommodated, the total is on the far right. The $11 million...
That's the accommodated.
That's the accommodated.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. All right.
And then, again, you all can read, I don't need to go through this, but again, I think Nicole did a great job, again, breaking out then the view from 10,000 feet into the different cost centers, schools that are there, again, and where they all, where they all exist. So, and I think that's the school-by-school breakdown in terms of the cost to run each of the school buildings in the district. So again, this document is going to get filled out a little bit with some contextual information. If anyone has any questions on this, and again, Ms. Creedon, your suggestion of putting the student profile in addition to this information, I think we'll certainly add that in, so people can get an idea of, of who we are. And certainly we'll entertain any questions.
Okay. Okay. All right. Mr. Murphy?
I don't have any questions. At some point, we have to, when we're ready to move on to the public hearing, we have to open that by motion.
Yes, thank you.
If we're looking for this...
Is, is there any other comments before we...
I just wanted to give everyone the background, and we are ready for the public hearing at the school committee's prerogative.
Okay. I'd like a motion to open a public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we open the public hearing on the FY '20 school committee pleasure.
Second.
Okay. We are now in an open public hearing, and I'd like, I'm sorry, oh, we have the vote on it, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstaining, the chair votes aye, 5-0-0. We are now in open public hearing. I want to mention, welcome those of you who took the time to come tonight, and I think you all know the purpose of this public hearing is to review and comment on the draft fiscal 2020 school, Burlington Public Schools budget, right? Is that, oh, I get it all right? And people may speak, normally we would keep to three minutes, but there's not a huge number of people, so if people, we'll see, you know, how much time we need. And if there's any other protocols or issues that come up as we go along, I would count on my colleagues to make sure that I follow the proper procedures. Do you have a comment right now, Mrs. Creedon, or are you just ready to speak? You'd like to speak? Okay. So with that, Mrs. Creedon, would you like to speak, if you can speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Nicole, for putting this together. One thing that I just wanted to bring up, because I wasn't clear on it myself, on page 16, thank you for the change, and Burlington High School, it shows that there's three assistant principals, and I just wanted everyone to understand that this actually, what we would consider like two assistant principals, but it's due to a classification. Nicole, maybe you could mention what that is?
That's the athletic director. So, right, but I think when we hired the athletic director, we, we also gave the athletic director some supervisory duties, so again, I would consider him another assistant principal or associate principal that focuses on athletics, but he's also the administrator on duty after hours, so we flex some of their time. So there's an assistant principal here, usually starting at 6:30 in the morning or seven, and then he's usually here till 6:30 in the evening.
Yep, and I just wanted to highlight that, because I think it's important, we feel like some of the elementary schools need more assistant principals, and I didn't want somebody to look at that and say, "There's three." What's that all about? And we've already discussed it so many times about the nurses, and I'm just concerned that I heard words like safety, and, you know, if there's some sort of problem. I do want the public to understand, these were hard decisions, but there are still two high school nurses, two middle school nurses, and a nurse in every single school, so it's not as if we're not staffing the nurses. We did add in one more nurse than we had previously. I think we all agree that we'd like to have more, but I just want to make sure that everyone does understand that the schools do have a nurse, and that we're not leaving them unattended. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Creedon. Is there someone else who would like to comment or ask questions?
I think Diana wants to address this.
Yeah, I actually heard other people, I've had some back speakers.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I will be speaking, but...
Yes, I will hang on every word.
As expected, but I, but I would allow others to...
And if you could state your name and what brings you here.
Yep. Thank you.
My first project's real, so hopefully this is... My name's Ed Dubey, 3 Locust Street, Concerned Citizen, and I'm a town meeting member of Precinct Two. So as I'm sitting here listening, excuse me, some questions came to mind, and I just want to make sure I understand the whole process. These guideline meetings, when you have these guideline meetings, how does that actually work? Okay, because I, I'm sitting here listening, and I like the fact that the committee is saying, "Maybe we need to sell this more." Mrs. Monaco said that specifically, and I agree with that sentiment, and it sounds like everybody's in, pretty much in agreement, but how, how does setting these guidelines work? How do these meetings work?
Who would like to answer that? Mr. Murphy?
It's basically a meeting that's held at Town Hall, typically towards the end of November, beginning of December, there's usually more than one. And it includes two subcommittee members from the school committee, which for the last few years have been Christine and myself, some members of the Ways and Means Committee, two members of the Board of Selectmen, the town treasurer, the town accountant, town administrator. I think, is that pretty much the, who's there? And it's just, oh, the superintendent. Yeah, yeah, I mean, from the school, from the, yeah, from the administration for schools as well. It's, it's an opportunity for the town side and the school side, and the financial guidance side, to have discussions over the upcoming fiscal year, what people foresee some needs to be, what the town's snapshot of their financial standing is, and ultimately, the goal of it is to come up with a budget guideline that all of the departments in town will strive for in the upcoming budget season.
All right. So, follow-up question. Now, is that strictly to keep the tax rates down? Because, well, because I'm sitting here, and that's what it sounds like, where I was kicking the can down the road, it sounds like.
Well, I, I guess it's, it's a matter of perspective. It's, it, it's an attempt to, historically, the, going back the last 10 or 15 years anyway, the goal going into those meetings was to not reduce services from one year to the next, and come up with a number that allows us to at least maintain services, and depending on other things, maybe increase services in different places. It's not just the schools, it's the, the town side, the police, the fire, the DPW, and all of the other town departments. So when you say is it an attempt to keep taxes down, I think it's, it's an ongoing attempt to spend reasonably, keeping in mind that there are taxpayers out there who are concerned about their tax bill, and there are residents out there who are concerned about the services that they receive, and there's always that balance.
Yeah, that part I get, so. All right. So, follow-up question to that, then. I'm, I'm satisfied with that answer, so thank you very much. Class size, what's the average class size here in Burlington?
At the elementary level, or...
Yeah, let's start with the elementary level.
That's, I think it's, we're usually around 18-1 district-wide, and they can range from, you know, anywhere from, I don't know, 16 to 20 roughly.
Mm-hmm. Okay, how about middle school?
Middle school, there are nine teams and probably about 850 students, so they are usually low twenties, I think, typically.
Okay. High school?
Again, depending on the class. So we tend not to run classes that have under 10 students, sections under 10 students. Introductory classes, probably, again, 20, but I was just looking at some today, just, I think we have 10, for instance, in our advanced...
Yeah, yeah, I understand, it'd be some variability there.
So there'd be some variability. So again, class size, I would say is a strength of the community, from, again, from my talking to my colleagues, in terms of where we are.
All right. And so you mentioned that, or at least this is my impression, this is what I heard, services, the need for services are increasing amongst students. Okay, was that, did I hear that accurately?
Yes.
All right. So, it, with the amount of this increase, okay, and the fact that we're not filling some of these positions, okay, how much of a strain is that putting on the system?
Mr. Dubey, again, I think it's a relative conversation. So Burlington funds its schools well. So we tend to have, the only thing I would add to Mr. Murphy's comments is, we have an expense-side conversation at those guidelines, we really don't have a revenue-side conversation. The town is sort of figuring out what their revenue is, we talk about what our needs are. And I think that really helped us, again, when I first got here, the economy tanked in, what is it, 2008, 2009, and school spending stayed relatively steady, because the community was in a good place. We spend well over foundation, so any conversation we have is a relative conversation. I think you and I have been part of a presentation where our, again, our expenses are, we're, we're well-funded. We have added positions, again, in the 10 or 11 years I've been here, we've added significantly to our student services. So our ELL teachers have expanded, again, our nurses, while not satisfactory to everybody, we've expanded those services. We have school psychologists in every building, we've added social workers at every level, elementary, middle, high school. Really feel like we've addressed some of the social, emotional needs. Where I think we've been a little bit short, honestly, has been on some of the people who don't provide direct services to kids, so on the administrators, we're always lagging with that, and, and that might be just my personal bent. I, I don't think we addressed the evaluation system as well as, or as technically, from a compliance perspective, as we probably should have. We just don't have the staff to, as Mrs. Monaco commented, to do 30, 35 high-quality evaluations a year, but I, I don't think we've been lacking in terms of student services or, or coverage.
Right, and I'm not trying to put anybody in the spot, but just sitting here, listening to all this, okay, I'm like, well, jeez, why are we, why do we keep kicking the can down the road? Why don't we just raise the number? Okay? Which, again, I'm hearing that you folks are saying that you need to sell it better. And, you know, I think that's, I think that's pretty accurate, so. Okay, last thing, since you brought up foundation budget, and I know the school committee endorsed, you know, supporting the foundation budget. Are you guys all coming down on May 16th to the State House? Okay, I mean, good, it's a good time to make some noise, right? You guys, if they adjusted things, that's about $1.21 million, right? That'd leave you short maybe about 200, yeah, less than $200,000.
Would you mind just explaining a little bit, because it's not just this group, but everyone watching what hap, what's happening on May 16th, just briefly?
Yeah, sure.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, 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 that's okay, I like to talk. So, on May 16th, there are at least two events down at the State House, okay, starting in early afternoon and running into the early evening. And my understanding is there are going to be a lot of people out there trying to make some noise, so the legislators pay attention. Basically, the foundation budget has not been adjusted in over 20 years. So basically, what that, what that means is that towns like Burlington are short, I think it's $1,081, it's about 1.1 million. But then you look at places like Springfield, okay, New Bedford, it's much, much higher. And there's the Promise Act and the Cherish Act, both pieces of legislation that are, we're trying to push through, we being, I'm a teacher over in Lexington, just, yeah, full disclosure. And the state keeps saying, "Well, you know, do more with less, do more with less." And frankly, teachers, administrators, parents are all getting a little tired of hearing, "Do more with less," so we want to actually get a lot of people out there on May 16th to make some noise, maybe even shut down Beacon Street, who knows? Okay? And get people to pay attention, because there's a lot of push to get the Cherish Act and the Promise Act passed. So anybody that could come out, anybody watching, anybody sitting here on May 16th, it'll be time well spent.
What time is it?
I can, I can actually send Martha something, Madam Chairman, our chairwoman, something with the specific times. I believe it's starting as early as 1 o'clock, okay, but then there's a second event starting at, I believe, 4:30, but I don't have those nailed down. I could send something to Martha.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
And thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thanks. Nice pin.
Another speaker, Mrs. Sickler, would you like to speak? Another speaker, Mrs. Sickler, would you like to speak?
Good evening. Eileen Sickler, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. First of all, congratulations to Mrs. Simon on your new role. Good luck with that. So, I've been at a number of the, at the meetings, and one of the questions that I had, the last one, and I'm going to be a nudge about it, is, Nicole, can you tell us about the offset to the utilities? And what I'm talking about is, last year, there was about $150,000 of expenses that were reclassed or transferred from the utilities account, the operating budget, to the Francis Wyman Before and After School Program. These are appropriate expenses that relate to the time, I think, you know, that the school's open for, for that program. So, I was just wondering what that number is for FY '20. It's netted in the 1.7 in utilities now.
Ms. Kasha, can you respond to that, please?
Yeah, it's netted in that, in that total number.
Exactly. So, what's the gross out?
I don't know.
Okay, so maybe, so can I, will you send that along, or?
Yeah, we can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
What we're doing, again, just point of clarification through the chair.
Yes.
Ms. Sickler, the Before and After School Program, I think the office is at Francis Wyman, but part of the reason the offset changed is now we have it in five locations. We have it at the four elementary schools, and we have it at the middle school, so...
Oh, so there should be more of a reclass?
Well, I think that's why the original reclass was done last year, is we've, again, greatly expanded the program, so we're using more utilities, using more space.
All right, super. All right.
As of last year? So, there's not a big increase for this year?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, is there going to be a, well, first of all, so is this going to be posted on the website fairly immediately, once you all approve it tonight? Can I assume people...
How was you, how are you planning to do that, Dr. Conti?
Again, we can certainly talk about it. It's in draft form right now, but after the vote of the school committee, it really becomes a school committee budget at that point, and we'll do whatever you want.
Okay. So, we'll discuss that after we vote?
Okay. You know, with the, with the mention of the teacher headcount, and, I mean, I think that's an obvious point, as we know, it's 85% or whatever of the total budget. As with most companies, headcount is the most, is the greatest expense. So, I think it would be helpful to have a grid, to have some data points, and that is, you know, what is the student headcount, what's the respective teacher headcount in each school by class? So that people can also start to see in a linear fashion, "Oh, all right, so, you know, there's 20 kids in grade three and 25 in grade four," and whatever. And so, they can start to see it go up and see, you know, future needs, and that there might, we might need more teachers in grades seven, eight, nine, what have you, to accommodate those in the early grades coming up. But in any event, I mean, you know, to have all these numbers down, that's great, but, you know, there's some information, I think, that would be more helpful to people to understand the need for these teachers.
Yes, Dr. Conti?
No, again, I don't really want to do it back and forth. I think we provide a lot of the information we have. We can certainly make that available if you'd like to see. And it's not just a combination of student head to teachers. We also have a limitation in the number of classrooms, for instance. So, we may at some point not be able to add any additional teachers if we have no space to put them. And then there are some programs, just by their design, have very low student-to-teacher ratios as well. So, it's, we can put out, again, enrollment information. I think we can do that by school, if you would sort of find some of that clarifying. I just think the...
I think so.
Student head by schedule or by class, I think you mean by classroom, not by class of student.
That's right.
By classroom, might be a little bit misleading, but let me look at some of that, how we can do that in a way that's clear.
Okay, I think that would be helpful for Town Meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
The stipends, I mean, there's about $1 million in stipends. So, and some of them are contractual, I understand that. But what have we done to, to reduce those outside of the contractual ones?
And again, I would say the vast majority of stipends are contractual. And the, again, the greatest percentage exists at the high school, and I think the high school principal reviews the stipends every year. So, the students fill out a, in the stipend leader, so the teacher who leads the chess club has to take attendance, turn in attendance, students turn in some feedback on the chess club, and the stipends, whether they run or don't run, are really based on student demand. So, if we don't have any students sign up for the chess club, or it's a club, that's where the kids are losing interest. And I'm trying to give you an example of, I think we had a medical careers club for a while that might not be running anymore because they lost interest. We don't run the stipends just to run the stipends. They're really based on student interest and, and need. So, again, what have we done to reduce them? I think the high school principal makes that decision every year before he posts the job, and he usually posts them in the spring after the budget is approved. So, I'm not answering your question satisfactorily, but we can't, yeah, we don't have to fill some stipends, but typically, if there's a law, if there's high demand by students, we would, we would run this, we would run the stipend.
Okay. And would someone get two stipends? I mean, would a class get two stipends for some reason? You know, one teacher can't do it for a portion of the year, and another one steps in?
I think possibly. Some of the stipends don't run all year, so if it's a seasonal activity, then it might only be for a half the year or a third of the year, if it's a sports season, for instance. So, there's lots, lots of different ways. There are some stipends that are split between two teachers. So, there's a lot, again, there's a...
That was really my question, so it's split?
Yeah, we typically, we won't divide it typically beyond two folks, just because it, for continuity's sake. But I'm saying, I think we have some that run with two. And then there are some activities that have so many kids that we add an additional adult just for safety reasons. So, I'm not sure would be an example of that, but maybe, I think we have over 100 kids in track, for instance. So, we can't have one coach overseeing 100 kids.
Sure. So, I'm sorry, so this is going to be posted once approved to the website? At some point, you're going to talk about that?
We haven't decided exactly.
Gotcha.
Okay, sorry. But we will discuss that later.
Right. Just a bit off-topic, the revolving accounts that Mr. Powers has been working on for whatever, several months.
Okay, if I could ask you, that, this is a budget hearing, is that appropriate? Or, because I think you can get that answer somewhere else.
I'll take that off, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Let's see, what else? So, if people have questions, how would you like those to be sent to? I mean, just, just sent by email, and you'll respond to people individually?
That's typically how it's happened in the past. I think part of the six or eight-week process we've been through is for people to come in and ask questions as we're going through the process. I think we will, again, I'm assuming there'll be some public sharing of the, of the budget document, and if people have questions, typically, they've emailed me, and then we've gotten answers out. If I see consistent questions, then we can certainly do a broader response with some of the, with some of the answers, if we see that.
Some redundancy, you mean?
Yeah, but we'll, we'll look at that.
Okay. And people could also come here and ask questions?
Right.
Okay.
Come to our school committee meetings?
Yes, yes, yes.
At any of the school committee meetings between now and the town meeting, that's also something people could do.
Okay.
Okay. Mrs. Russo?
Through the chair, would it be, I think it might be best if the questions that Town Meeting members have and citizens have go through Dr. Conti, and then he can respond to Nicole, or if she CC'd under. But if it goes through Dr. Conti, and then he can get back to them instead of all through Nicole, everything else.
That's fair, that's what I asked, that's what I asked. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time. Is there someone else in the audience who would like to ask questions or make a comment?
Mr. Dubey, Mrs. Sickler, ask my questions.
Great. And I believe there's someone else. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Good evening. It's been so long. I have, most of my questions have to do with the operating budget reductions to guideline sheet. The first, under the expenses, the special education, reduce contracted services and fund through grants for approximately $85,000. I understand that it's looking to, I mean, in general, we attempt to use grants to supplement, not supplant, our current programs. My concern is, well, my first question is, are we guaranteed this particular grant every year in perpetuity?
I believe this is an entitlement grant, and Mary went through all the entitlement grants to look at what the costs were. And again, none of these reductions were without her approval. So, again, I couldn't tell you exactly what made up the $84,000, but I can get you that information from, from Mary.
I mean, I think it's clear. My concern is that we may find ourselves with a funding cliff next year, in the same way that we had to be concerned when we were talking about the Recovery Act funds.
Yep.
The revisions to tutors in excess of $250,000. I believe that we reduced the tutor hours last year as well. What are we looking at in terms of a reduction over the two years to the service, to the service hours that we have for students?
Again, I think, Ms. Marcus, just the, a lot of the revisions for tutors were that we had tutors, people who were classified as tutors who weren't tutors. So, we cleaned up a lot of who was being assigned where. And I think there were some positions and salaries that were moved out of the, out of the tutor line because they weren't acting as tutors. So, some of that is cleanup. We are not reducing any hours from fiscal, from fiscal '19 in terms of services that tutors are providing.
Okay. Then it just seems strange that that would then be a reduction in the overall budget. Question again...
Again, just to say, I think some of those were special ed IAs, and they were moved into a grant. So, I think we just were, we were reclassifying some of those positions.
All right, so the grant funded. I am concerned about the possibility for increase in class sizes with the number of reductions, especially at the high school. I would like to make sure that we're careful about where we go with that with, I mean, it's not as though we had an excess of staff before. We went down by four this year. It looks like we're not backfilling those positions. My understanding was that the reason we were able to accommodate this for the current year was a particularly small incoming freshman class. My question is, obviously, is the incoming freshman class this coming year going to be exceptionally small?
It's smaller than typical, yes.
Okay. I'm very concerned about the, the loss of a librarian. One of the things that really marks a strong and well-rounded school system is the fact that they have licensed, certified librarians in every school, and it has actually been one of the things that I have been able to point to with pride when we talk about what it is that makes Burlington able to do what it does, especially with our digital literacy, our one-to-one programs, and our support of our students. So, is the intent to not have a librarian or to only have a part-time librarian in a, you know, school with almost 800 students?
No, I think right now, we have more than one FTE in the library. I think we're going to be expanding the part-time FTE slightly. I also think we're going to be staffing a little bit differently, and Mr. Valano spends much more time over at the middle school, and so we believe we can have coverage in the library, again, I think, every day. Not ideal, obviously, but we have, we're trying to make the, the numbers work. So, I'm hearing your criticism there, and I do believe...
It's actually concern. I'm not trying to criticize so much as I'm expressing concern for the school system and our students.
Yeah. I have, share that. So, I think we can deliver...
Yeah.
The program, the high quality, I'm not taking it personally. I'm just saying, I think we can deliver a high-quality library program by redistributing some of the staff that, that we have.
Okay.
Again, not ideal.
And I will leave the labor question regarding that, replacing a unit A position with a director for later while we focus on the budget now. Additional concerns, first of all, I just want to make a correction to what was said earlier. The Marshall Simons Middle School only has one nurse at the moment. I just checked with Barbara Conley. So, currently, there's only one nurse for 788 students. So, that is a concern. I assume, then, that the additional nurses specifically for the middle school?
Again, we're going to get the nurse. We need to get the budget approved, and then Barbara would be the strong voice in assigning where that nurse is.
Okay. I am looking also at the .5 Pine Glen music position. Now, that's a position that was reduced last year. So, we've been doing without this year, and it's been backfilled by a secondary-level music teacher, actually, a director of our department. What is the intent for the follow-up, for the upcoming year? It was my understanding that that was a temporary situation in terms of putting a secondary teacher in a primary school.
Yeah, I think we're going to do some reallocation of the music staff we have. The middle school is redesigning their schedule, so I think there's going to be some impact of the redesign of the middle school schedule, and I believe we can cover that halftime music position at Pine Glen, given that reorganization.
Okay. And my last piece was just that I noticed that in the yellow section here, which shows the things that were requested but were not included in the budget, does not include the two nurses that were mentioned. And if you go to page seven of the budget overview, actually, there's a number of positions there that were shown as budget priorities that had, regarding additional staffing needs. And so, I feel as though that there were a greater number of positions, actually, that were identified as necessary, or at least a priority, that have not been able to be funded. So, in terms of removing the following from the budget, I'm concerned that that does not necessarily show all of those.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who has a comment for the public hearing?
Madam Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye. 5-0-0, this public hearing is now closed. I, before we move on to, then we have to...
Talk the budget, yep.
On the budget. Okay. So, there are four categories that we need to vote on, and if I'm going too fast, let me know, but...
I'll make a motion.
I believe, I need a motion, please, from Mr....
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a total school salary account in the amount of $45,989,916.
Second. Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the salary account for the fiscal '20 school budget? Ms. Monaco?
Just briefly, because this is a moving target, it is possible that we may have some retirements that we don't know about. It's possible that some of what you have put in this, this one option of how to fit within the guideline may change.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I just want people to be aware that this is not necessarily exactly where all of the salary money will be spent, but it's the best we can do at the moment.
The best guess?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the salary budget? Okay, all those in favor, do we vote individually, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Murphy?
No.
No.
Oh, no.
We vote all together, okay.
We vote the category.
All those in favor of the school personnel budget as the, in the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
And the chair votes aye. We have two, so we have...
3-0-2.
3-0-2. Thank you. All right.
Madam Chairman, I vote that we approve a non-salary account in the amount of $7,304,040.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the non-salary budget for fiscal year 2020? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye. It's 5-0-0.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve a total FY '20 operating budget in the amount of $53,293,956.
Second. Is there any discussion on the total fiscal 2020 requested budget? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye. It's 5-0-0.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve a special education... Madam Chairman, I move that we approve a special education accommodated account budget in the amount of eleven million, six-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-eight dollars.
Second. Is there any further discussion? All those in
Yeah.
Yes, Mrs. Monica.
Just, just one point. After all of the hoops we jumped through over the past six or eight months, I just want to point out once more that, as you can see, we vote salary, non-salary, total budget, and accommodated is totally separate. It is not mixed in with the other budgets. It's not, we don't move money into it or out of it. It's separate.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. That's five-zero-zero. I want to thank Dr. Conti and Ms. Kasha and Mr. Kuna for all their hard work. This was a very difficult budget year. I want to thank our school subcommittee, because you really helped us a huge amount. I want to thank you for your support for the budget, and I want to thank the full Ways and Means Committee for their support. Oh, no, they're voting tomorrow. They're, you're all voting tomorrow, all right? We had a vote last week on something else. We'll discuss that later.
Hold that thought.
But I definitely thank you for all your support, regardless of the vote outcome, because it's been very helpful, and your expertise has been incredibly helpful as well. So we now have a voted budget for fiscal year 2020. This is the budget that we'll be going to town meeting in May with. There's been a question about how we should share this information with town meeting members and other community members who are interested. Mr. Nelson, do you have a sugge, no, is that hand? You want to suggest?
My hand's not really up, but I'm happy to say, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't post it. I think the more information we put out there prior to town meeting, the better off we are. Every year we hear criticism that we didn't put something together in advance, and I think this is a nice year. I'm involved, I agree, for putting it together. It's excellent. So if we get it on a website, people can look it over ahead of time, and they can't accuse us of not sharing the information with them far in advance of town meeting. That's my thought.
Have a question. Yes.
Patrick, are you the person who would actually make that happen?
We can get it on the website, I'm sure, but I just think formatting becomes an access issue. Like, one of the reasons we got our new website was because of some access concerns. And I think if we throw a PDF up on the website, it's not going to be accessible to everybody that might want to look at it. But again, I'm just throwing that out there. We can discuss it further behind the scenes and let you know.
Okay.
I mean, we can definitely get a PDF up there pretty quickly, but again, that's, I don't believe, accessible to people that may have vision needs or, yeah, or hearing needs. Won't be, you can't read a PDF off of, off of the websites.
Right. Mr. Murphy?
In the interest of wanting the assignment to feel, but
Pressure?
The, the, the full joy of being chairman.
[laughing]
On the front page.
Oh, yes.
I'm, I'm still listed as chair.
Oh.
And not that I don't enjoy the interactions.
Okay.
But I think, might want to just readjust the, the list of the members there and have Martha and Christine enlisted in their appropriate positions.
Okay. Thank you very much for that notice. Other suggestions or comments on that? Mrs. Russo?
I, I think we should at least get it on the website, and then how do you make it accessible? Like, isn't that what we got in trouble with? Isn't, isn't that how we got in trouble with the website?
Can we email it?
And I didn't understand the whole accessibility thing.
Well, if you email a PDF, it's the same problem.
We have to fully convert it.
To be able to be read on the computer.
As it, as it sits right now, a PDF is not ADA compliant, especially for a website. It would need to be converted. Just one extra step. I mean, there's some legwork that would have to happen behind the scenes. It is something we could do, just not in the current format that it's in.
Okay. I'd like to just suggest that we, if we could post it as a PDF with a note that if it was not accessible, to please notify X, Y, or Z person, who could then find a way to get it to that person, whether it was in hard copy, whether it was, when you say, Mr. Kuna, that we can convert, does that mean convert where it would still? The concern about a PDF, it can't just be a Word document, because it has to be a document for people who are watching, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason we need to keep it as a PDF and not just post it as a Word document is that it's a legal document that has to be posted as-is and cannot be changed by anyone else. So if someone were to access it, we, we don't want, no one should be able to act, to change it. Is that correct? Am I correct about that?
Your statement is correct. It's just that if somebody who did have either hearing or visual impairment went to the website to view a standard PDF, they wouldn't get the full functionality out of it.
Yes, I understand that. But the reason that we're in this position is because of the legal legality of having a document that's a legal document that we don't want people to be able to change. So in order to convert it, if there is someone who needs it converted, if it's not ideal for accessibility, but if we could put a note along with the posted budget, that if it needs to be in another format, is that something that we could do? Mr. Larkin or Mr. Kuna, could we just note?
Maybe mail them a copy.
We could, if they, a, a hard copy obviously would be the easiest way to share it, but is that reasonable? Is that, is that AD accessible if we provide it in an alternative form for those who need it?
Obviously, we'll have to continue this conversation. We're not, I'm not talking about converting it into a formatable document such as a Word document
Right.
or anything like that. There's associations with tags and so forth in the background that would make it hear, hearing and/or visually compatible.
Okay.
And still keep it as a PDF.
Okay.
But allow more accessibility to it.
Okay.
So that's the conversion that would have to happen.
So
So again, we would have to do some legwork to make it ready, which means that we can't post it tonight, but I believe that soon, with the committee's approval, and if your request is to have it on the website, then we will look internally to address that.
So is it reasonable for you to make that conversion that could be posted on the website? And would that be a reasonable use of, you know, something to do, you could do? Is that something we want to do?
Why don't, I think we just have to look at it, and I think in the meantime, we can just post it as a PDF with a note, and we'll just do that relatively quickly and then look at trying to make the conversion.
That's what I'd like to suggest. Mr. Murphy?
I know in years past, we've put a couple of hard copies, like at the Burlington Public Library, or maybe at the Town Clerk's Office, so people could go in and access.
And again, Cole mentioned they are already there, and that's correct. And again, this is, while the, the numbers are not draft, we're still sort of filling in some of the context. Again, want to add some detailed information about our students. It was suggested tonight that I put some class size information in. So the information's going to be evolving. We'll continue to add it to that site. And at some point, we, we'll be mailing out or emailing out the entire package to all town meeting members, probably within the next couple of weeks. I think the town puts the warrant, again, everyone's used to the routine. We'll make sure town meeting members have all the information a couple of weeks prior to town meeting when they receive all of their town information.
So if I can be clear, the document that we're going to post then is the one that we've been working off of tonight?
Yeah.
That has all of the most up-to-date accuracies, and that is what we just voted on. Okay. I'm comfortable with that. Is there other, are there other questions or concerns? And so then, I think we're ready to move on to the next item on the agenda. We have a conversation about the lab capital plan increase that Dr. Conti, I think, will explain to us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The lab board, again, of which I represent, the Burlington School Committee, is requesting an increase in the total capital fund for their collaborative. The increase is a percentage of the lab fiscal eighteen surplus. The exact amount is four-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and sixty cents. There are many building projects that they're anticipating in their member town school buildings, and they want, they being lab, want to plan ahead to improve the lab space and equipment. Lab is also applying to be a vendor for post-twenty-two services. If approved, lab will rent a building to provide these services, and they can potentially use capital funds towards this initiative. So we're seeing more and more of our collaborative families wanting services after the age of twenty-two, and I think there's been a slight change in the regulations that will allow lab to do some of that work. Again, there's no financial implications to the district. This is using lab funds. We just need approval of the capital plan. It's recommended the school committee approve an increase in the lab capital plan by six-hundred-thousand dollars for a total of two-point-six million dollars, and that would be towards the lab capital plan, part of the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, just a quick question, Eric. I was a little bit confused, because it says the exact amount is four-ninety-one, four-seventy-one. Why are we doing six-hundred?
I think the executive director just wanted a, sort of a threshold. This is to communicate to the Department of Ed, so he has a little bit of wiggle room. So again, I just think he's, he set a ceiling.
Joya.
Okay. Any other comments? My, oh, yes, go ahead, Mrs. Russo.
I just have a question. The post-twenty-two services, is that age after twenty-two, or what does that refer to?
Yeah, it's the age after twenty-two, trying to connect students with group homes, trying to get them attached to work, using some of the lab services that, where they can do some transition servicing, job support, job coaching for students after the age of twenty-two. So it's just a really, it's a growing need with a certain population of students in our community.
Great. Thank you.
And I want to clarify for myself and for people who may not be familiar with this. We are a member district of the lab collaborative, which provides special education services for students from Burlington and other districts. As a member, we get certain advantages, and we also have a representation on the lab board. I believe it's Dr. Conti. And so they run their own budgets, but as a member district, we are responsible for this, I don't know what the right word is, oversight.
Mm-hmm.
And therefore, we, as a participating member district, need to approve a major financial capital plan increase like this, and it's not just Dr. Conti represents us, but he needs to get our approval to go forward with this kind of a, a change in their capital plan. Is that an accurate description, Dr. Conti? And if you want to add any things to clarify for people, because when I first read the agenda for tonight, I'm thinking, why are we going to add this, this much money? And, and we're not. We aren't adding that much money to the lab collaborative. We are approving the lab collaborative to budget this money and plan for this money and raise this money. Is that correct?
Yeah. Collaboratives are like school districts. They're highly regulated, and they need to have their plans approved from, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and this vote will help them do that. Every three or four years, we bring Patrick Barbieri, who's the executive director, out to present on lab update, lab programming. And I actually think it's, he does a great job, and I think it's important to learn about that. So I'll see if he's available in the next few months, and maybe he can come out and just do a lab summary.
All right. Any other questions before we vote? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? I, the chair votes aye, so that's four-zero-zero. And our next item is the student discipline policy and handbook language addition. Is that, Mr. Larkin, are you going to speak to that?
Yes. So we had our PQA tiered audit this past fall.
Excuse me, could you say what a PQA audit is, please?
I could. It's a Program Quality Assurance.
Okay, thank you.
The Department of Ed comes out and, and goes through, you know, a variety of things to make sure we're compliant with what we need to be. And a couple of things bounced back. One of them was the review of the handbooks. There was some language that was omitted in its regards to due process of students. We had a section with students with disabilities, but there also should be some wording for a student who is subject to disciplinary exclusion if the family requests an evaluation after the disciplinary exclusion is presented to them. So again, we have some language under the bold portion that says the district would like to add the following that was recommended by our special education attorney. And what we would do is, we would get that online pretty quickly, and then we would make sure that when we do the print handbooks this summer, that that would be updated. And that was what the department was looking for, just that we, any handbook that we have online, that that language is, is up to date. And then, again, they're fine with us making sure that when we print it for next year, that everything's where it needs to be.
For discussion, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion that we add the designated language to the, to the handbook as requested.
Second. Is there a further discussion?
And policy.
And
JK.
And policy JK. Is, are there questions or comments on this?
No, it makes sense. It's a compliance thing that we really need to update, so I would support the motion.
Okay. Mrs. Russo? I had a question. I just wanted to state also, because not everyone read all of what we got to read, that in order to indicate that we've met this requirement, we are going to post it on the website, hopefully by the end of April. By the fall, we will have it included in all of our student handbooks, and that we will notify all the parents as well through their buildings. Is that correct? And so that's how we will implement it. And for about policy JK, is that, is there a change in policy JK or not? I had a question on that.
I'm, I'm not as familiar as, as Mrs. Gilbert would be. I was only looking at the student handbooks.
Okay.
I wasn't looking at the policy.
So it really is the policy itself, and the criteria is taken out of the policy and put into the handbook?
So we are adopting the policy JK, which we didn't have before.
Right.
And that, we have had it before.
Yes.
We are updating our approval and amending it.
Including that language.
And including this language in our policy JK, which we have had before. And this was at the recommendation, I believe, of our special ed director, Ms. Hood. Is that correct? Both of these changes?
She approves them. I, again, we consulted our school district's special ed attorney as well.
So we have, we have a buy-in with our special ed director and our special education attorneys, and so I'm very much in support of this as well. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The chair votes aye. That's five-zero-zero. Thank you. Now we have an update on elementary report cards and parent conferences.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The school committee, I believe, adopted a two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty calendar in regards to starting date, ending date, and some of the other important days that we have. We got some feedback from elementary principals through their, through their staff, and we started a conversation and, about rethinking some of what we're doing at the elementary level. So I wanted to make some suggestions tonight to the committee. If the conversation's going to be very long, I think we can sort of continue on the conversation to another meeting. But elementary principals felt the November thirteenth parent conference day was a little bit early in the year, unless it was part of a sort of restructuring of how we communicate with families. And so the suggestion, again, made in consultation with their staff, was to go from three-report-card situations to two-report-card situations, but at a parent conference in the spring. So they would go to two-report-cards and two-parent conferences, as opposed to one-parent conference and three-report-cards. So the, and again, that would be similar to what we're doing right now at kindergarten. We have two-parent conferences and two-report-cards at the kindergarten level. When we initially talked about this, we did talk about piloting at the kindergarten level and then trying it at different grades. We've just always bumped into some calendar challenges, and so I just wanted to bring up the idea again and the thought maybe of a pilot. I do think we need to, as a part of this conversation, maybe this summer or next year, and Patrick and I talked about, putting together a, a group, including some of the student information office, teachers, to rethink the elementary report card itself. The one we have is about nine or ten years old, and it tends to go in cycles. So we initially changed it because parents complained about the report card we had. We put a group together of teachers, parents, and everyone, developed this report card, and now people are complaining about this report card. So I just think they might have a shelf life, and we need to rethink it. So again, the suggestions that I'd like to make are to have the November thirteenth be a, again, the first parent conference. We would have the first report card mid-year, around January thirtieth, which is a Thursday. Our second parent conference would be the week of March twenty-third, so they would be occurring again throughout that week. And then the, obviously, there'd be a year-end report card at the end of the year, whenever that happens to occur. Again, it's June seventeenth in our current, in our current calendar. And so, again, I don't, we don't have to make the hard change tonight. I just wanted to inform the committee if you had comments for me to respond to those comments. comments. But I think that was the feedback that we got from elementary principals with their teachers and looking at how we were laying out the calendar at the elementary school. And again, I have one other suggestion, but that does not have to do with the report cards or the conferences.
Okay. So for comments, yes, Mrs. Monica?
Do you expect a vote on this tonight?
No.
This might sound, I don't know, different. I'd like to know what parents think.
Okay.
I can understand the desire to have two conferences. I have a little trouble with only two report cards in a year. However, I agree that the report cards, as they are now, are so hard to understand that if you didn't have any, it probably wouldn't make any difference. I really would like to know how parents feel about this, because if I were answering a questionnaire of this nature, I would want more than two report cards in a year. I would prefer four. Maybe that's old school, but it's just what I would prefer, because I think it's a motivating factor for students. Again, the current report card may not be, because it's like strange.
It's a standard space report card, yes?
Yeah, it's a pretty odd report card. But anyway, I can understand the need for conferences, and I think that you should make sure that any parent who would like to take advantage of that has the opportunity. But I also don't think it needs to be forced on every parent. You know, if a parent says, hey, my kid's doing fine, I don't need a conference, then that's okay. But I certainly think they should be offered one.
Mm-hmm.
So that's all I have to say.
And again, through the chair, I think teachers are very generous with their time. I think there's lots of communication with families through email. I think there are many teachers that are already having second conferences and third conferences as sort of needed by parents. And I also think there's many other ways that we are communicating what's happening in the classroom, using technology. I think something that's very popular at the elementary level is a tool called Seesaw, and so we have significant amount of parent traffic, looking at their children's work using some technology. So I just think how we are conveying, how the students are doing, can be updated. And I think part of the reason of reducing the number of report cards as well is it's a significant amount of work to fill out the report cards as they are presently structured, and then adding a parent conference in addition to that, I think, would be somewhat problematic. So I think we can rethink the report card, maybe simplify it a little bit. I think we can talk about that. But putting together something for parents or to respond to, I think that's something that we can accomplish.
Maybe we could have something for parents to respond to and a group of teachers to maybe do a report card that's not as difficult to create. And, I don't know. You obviously are not on the same page with me on this one, which is fine.
No, it's just, it's honestly one of those moving targets, because we could make the report cards, standard space report cards, sort of less granular, then people always want more detail. And so it's one of those things like calendar, you'll never please everybody, and grades are just very abstract, especially for elementary children. So what we try to convey is where your child is based on a skill that we find important at that grade. And it's, so it's not a comparison model. I think a lot of times, parents want to say, how's my kid doing in comparison to?
Every other child in this grade.
Right. And we try not to have those conversations at the elementary level. What we want to say is, where are they? How are they growing? How are they developing? What are we seeing in terms of the skills that we find are important? And don't worry about any other kid, because your kid is perfect sort of where they are, and we need to teach them where they are. Maybe not Mrs. Russo's kids, what I'm saying. Everyone else's kids are sort of perfect where they are, and we'll go from there. So it's a different philosophy. I think the point here is, I think we can rethink how we communicate to parents. Ultimately, it's going to be, get reflected in a calendar, and I think getting some parent feedback will be important. I just think what started this conversation was honestly, the feedback from the elementary schools was November thirteenth was too early in the year to have, if we were going to keep everything the same, was too early in the year to have that parent conference. So I think if we don't do anything, I'm going to come back and change that date.
Wait, November thirteenth is too early?
November thirteenth.
Is too early?
That's what the feedback that we got, from teachers through teachers.
I understood that to be what you're proposing.
I am proposing that, if we change the report card to January and report card at the end of the year.
Okay.
They're saying if we were doing report cards in thirds, it's just, it would be too much to do at that time.
Thank you.
So that, that's where we're at.
Are there other comments, people, feedback for Dr. Conti? Yes, Mrs. Russo?
So I have a question with regard to using the three existing evening commitments. There would still be a back-to-school night evening, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. I don't know where the second conference disappeared between my oldest and my youngest, but it did. It was there, we had it. Meeting with the teacher is a very fluid conversation. I do not think it replaces email conversations. A lot of things come up in a conference that might not in an email. I've heard from many teachers, once that second, students, that second conference faded away, oh, I don't want to bother them, I don't want to bother them. And I said, no, 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 that's, you know, your ability to call and say, I'd like a second conference or email them. So I think having a second conference where parents are invited, whether or not they take it up on that, is very important. You're, especially first through third grade, they're learning how to read. There's a lot going on. There's a lot that the teacher sees and understands that the parents don't through a seesaw video on how that child's developing. We do an amazing job of knowing our students in front of us in this district, and I think it's extremely important that we have that opportunity to convey that to the parents. It's also building that relationship of the school, families, and student, that triangle that's so critical. And you say you're suing, hey, I'm going to see your teacher today, anything I should know. Something always spills out of them that, oh, by the way. So I am very much in favor of this conference being put back in. Many times, I always commend the teachers that put a comment. The comment to many parents is just as important, if not more important, than the actual grades that are on that report card. And unfortunately, not all teachers do that. So the second conference does have a lot of credibility, and I think really builds a lot of that support between the families and the school and the student, shows that we're all there together for that student. And it's nice to see their classroom more than once a year, too. I appreciate this.
Yeah, and again, through the chair, just a quick comment. I think some of the other feedback from, again, from principals, but sort of through teachers, was they want, on their report card format, an opportunity to add more comments. So again, I just think we have to rethink what we've done for the last ten years, and I think we have different tools to accomplish that. And I think maybe putting together a group or reaching out to parents might be a good next step, but I just wanted to say that. The other thing, again, I think is a simple change, I hope, is that we have a Professional Development Day, March third. And what teachers suggested, again, through some conversations, was they wanted to move the Professional Development Day from March third to March ninth. And their reasoning was, this year, we had a Professional Development Day, that was the Monday after we went to daylight savings time. And I forget, we spring ahead, so we lose an hour. And they felt that sort of day of recovery was really important, especially for young kids. And so I think we change, we must change on, what, March seventh, I think, that night? And so they wanted to move the PD Day to March ninth. So again, I just, do I need a vote to move that PD Day? I'm just informing you that.
So moved.
So moved. All right, so we'll do that.
We need discussion on moving the PD Day to March ninth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, five zero zero. I also want to comment, Dr. Conti, I appreciate these suggestions. I think it's very thoughtful, and I support you pursuing these, adding the second conference, doing a pilot, looking, talking further with teachers and parents and getting feedback on what we might want to do in terms of a new report card. So I definitely support this idea, and at some point, you will bring it back to us in a more concrete format for us to vote on the calendar, is that?
I hope, yes.
You hope, okay.
That's the plan.
So, thank you very much. Before we do the last two, before the Ways and Means people leave, I also, it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to review, revisit the capital warrant articles, which we think that the school committee, the school subcommittee of the Ways and Means did approve our warrant articles in full, and we appreciate your support, and the Ways and Means Committee did as well. And at our last school committee meeting, we were realized, there was a realization that we had, there was not funding this year for the summer custodians, which I think, I can say everyone felt was a really important piece of maintaining our buildings and preparing school for the September. It was an additional $125,000 warrant we put in, maybe as a placeholder. And it's listed last, and we had a little discussion about whether we should be asking town meeting for $125,000 more than what was budgeted. Dr. Conti or Mr. Kuna, do you want to explain it further? Should I go ahead and explain my concern?
No, go.
Okay. So the way it's, we listed it, we had set priorities on our first, and, wait, I have it right here. On our first sixteen, thank you. We had set our priorities on our first sixteen capital warrant articles, which met exactly the $1.4 million amount that was allotted to us by whatever committee does that, I forget, I apologize. And this was $125,000 afterward. I would like us to, I believe that we can change the order of them. And there was a little discussion, I'll open it up to the rest of the committee, about whether we should just ask town meeting for this additional money. I would like to suggest that we reorder these, if we feel that the seasonal employees are more important than another item, which I'd like Dr. Conti or Mr. Kuna to propose, which items we would put after the $125,000, and then reorder them. And my understanding is that the warrant hasn't been published yet or printed, and it will be on Monday, next Monday. And if we change the order before next Monday, that we could change the order of how town meeting votes on it. My reason for wanting to do this is that that allows town meeting to make a decision as to whether they want to add this amount of money to the allotment for the schools this year and the capital warrant items, rather than us only deciding we want to choose this amount or not and in priority order. So I hope I made that clear, what I'm asking the committee. So basically, I'm asking the committee, do we want to reorder? And I guess we'd need a confirmation from Mr. Sagarino, but I believe from someone in his office that we can do this, that if we reorder them, what order would we like them in? And I am suggesting that we put the seasonal employees ahead of a couple other things. Maybe I should ask Dr. Conti and Mr. Kuna first, what order they would put it in, so that we would meet, we could have a 1.4 vote, and then the town meeting could vote an additional amount if they so choose.
Madam Chair, I just think the, I think the school committee should maybe consider something first.
Okay.
I think the discussion last time was whether we would go in at 1.4 with the warrant articles or just ask for 1.525. And I think if the committee asks, is, votes, or discusses just going in at 1.525, $1,525,000, I'm not sure the order is as important. And the reason I would say that is because the town tends to group like things in the, in their warrant document anyway. So even if we have our list of priorities, there, we may not vote on design and engineering for the HVAC first anyway. They might take some of the smaller ones and group it under that one heading where we go through all the town warrants, I'm blanking on a warrant now, but the town's going to reorder them anyway. And so even the numbers that we have here may not be the same numbers that are going to end up in the town warrant. My belief is the seasonal employees article is going to end up as a separate article. It's not going to be anything that's grouped together. So I just think the important confirmation from the committee is whether we want to amend our request, because we did present to the full Ways and Means Committee the 1.525 last Wednesday, and the committee did approve the 1.525 on Wednesday. So that's where it stands now. If you want to reduce your request, I think that would be the conversation tonight, if you want to stay where you are. Again, I personally don't think the order matters that much, because the town's going to reorder them anyway. But Nicole, do you have any other, or Bob, or anyone else have any other ideas as to what? That's been my experience.
Did you have something else to add to that, Mr. Kuna?
I just wanted to agree with Eric that the numbers that are presented to this board or this committee are arbitrary. They're just, they're prioritized for our consideration, and they're numbered for our consideration, but when they go to the town, those numbers are not used, and they coordinate with whatever the town asks or requests that come in, and the ordering, again, would fit in the way that the town wants to assemble them.
Mrs. Monica?
I don't think the order makes any difference, but I, my understanding is that not only did we come in over, but the town came in over as well. And the discussion with the town administrator was that he would increase the amount of money for warrant articles to cover both our need and the town's need. So that I don't, at this moment in time, I mean, we can always do it just before town meeting, but at this moment in time, there is no reason to withdraw anything. And I agree with Eric that the order doesn't make any difference.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Russo?
I just want to say it's good news. I think at our last meeting, we were agonizing over whether we would have to reduce the amount of money we're going to spend to paint the schools, or whether we're going to try to come up with some of the money for the seasonal employees, which would have been very, very difficult. So I'm very pleased to hear that the town manager is supporting increasing the amount of overall money that's allocated for warrants. I think that there is a significant, fortunately, a significant amount of free cash available for the town, and rather than defer maintenance, I think this is excellent news. So I would suggest we just leave it. We have already approved them all at our last meeting, and we'll submit them to town meeting and see what town meeting feels about supporting everyone on our side, and on the town's side.
Other comments? Yes, Mrs. Creed.
I just wanted to mention, too, when we vote as town meeting members, we're not thinking that you were given 1.4 on your coming annual budget.
Right.
We see your whole list, what Ways and Means presents is basically what we're voting on, so.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
And again, just a point of emphasis, I guess, not clarification, but Ways and Means did vote last Wednesday on the 1.525, not on the 1.4. So that's, the exist, the existing warrant articles now are fully inclusive of what you have in front of you.
Well, I've misunderstood some of that process, so thank you all for clarifying that for me. Are there other questions? Okay. So we can try to finish up. We've got a couple more issues. We have out-of-state student and staff travel approval.
Thank you, Madam Chair. High school guidance coordinator, Jo Adabat, is requesting permission for guidance counselor, Liesel Smith, to attend a school counselor event at Penn State University on April 12th. Again, I think she's going on her own. It's recommended school committee approve this out-of-state travel for Liesel Smith to Penn State University.
So moved.
Second.
Home of the Nittany Lions.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, that's five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Middle school teacher Sue Rogers and Laura Phillips are requesting approval for out-of-state travel to New York City to participate in the Scholastic Art and Writing Ceremony for middle school students receiving national honors. There's no fiscal implication to the district. Teachers are going to pay their own expenses. It's recommended school committee approve out-of-state travel for Sue Rogers and Laura Phillips to New York City on June 6th and 7th.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, that's five zero zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Principal Sullivan has submitted an out-of-state travel request for the high school DECA team and two staff chaperones to travel to Orlando, Florida to participate. and two staff chaperones to travel to Orlando, Florida to participate in DECA's International Career Development Conference on April 29th through May 1st. The fiscal implications, students and families will pay $500 each and fundraiser amounts by the club approximately $650 each. The high school business budget will pay approximately $2,500 for conference registration and some expenses for the two chaperones. It's recommended that the school committee approve out-of-state travel for the high school DECA students and chaperones to Orlando, Florida on April 29th through May 1st.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to add congratulations to the DECA students and the staff who helped get them there for their amazing performances so far and I wish them the best luck and I'm in support of this.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye. That's five zero zero.
Again, Madam Chair, a final agenda item and then just have one brief announcement is athletic director, Sean Hart, has submitted a request for permission to donate old, no-longer-used hurdles to the Lowell Athletic, I think it's Lowell Catholic, for their athletic program. And again, the backup is right there from Mr. Hart. He basically said the hurdles have been in storage here for 10 or 15 years, they're in a back room, they're not adjustable. If we don't donate them, I think Mr. Hart is going to, would be asking permission to dispose of the hurdles and I think Lowell Catholic could put them to good use. So I guess we're asking, there's no fiscal implication to the district. It's recommended school committee approve the donation of hurdles that are no longer being used to Lowell Catholic.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Sounds like a good use for those old hurdles. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye. That's five zero zero. I want to also, you had an announcement, but I wanted to also thank Mrs. Russo for her year as our steady rudder and I appreciate all of what I've learned from you and thank you again for all that you've done for us this year.
Thank you.
And Dr. Conti has an announcement?
No, again, ending with gratitude is great. I just wanted to say, express some gratitude as well. We'll have 30 visitors from Burlington Company CGI. They're coming to Burlington to meet with our high school students, 30 of them, including two vice presidents, and they're going to talk about careers in computer science and some other engineering conversations. We have lots of our seniors on internships, starting now, and Patrick, that program started with like five students and now it's up over 100, so I think it's just been a tribute to high school staff. I know Ms. Deacon does a whole lot of work coordinating that along with Ms. Terrell. So thank you and again, I just wanted to echo your gratitude towards Ms. Russo of her leadership over the last year, so thank you for chairing. So with that, that concludes the agenda from my perspective.
Okay. Is there anyone here for further public participation? Seeing none. Is there a need for executive session?
No, ma'am.
There is not, therefore I'd like a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye. That's five zero zero. Thank you.